Okay, I see Jennifer's name and Guy.
Yeah, you have a quorum. Okay, you're good to go. Anytime you'd like to start.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's February 21st, 2022, GBOS regular meeting. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meetings Standards of Conduct. I'll call to order at 7:01. Brianna Sullivan, co-chair, Parks and Recreation and Cemetery Supervisor, will call Mike. Still muted.
Sorry, I'm in trouble getting off mute. Mike Edgington, co-chair and LUC supervisor.
Jennifer?
Jennifer Windguard, Public Safety.
And Guy?
Kelly Wade, Fire Department.
Okay, and for the record, Amanda Sassy is excused, and we have a quorum. Are there any disclosures tonight? Any at all?
I don't know if it's a, I don't know if it's disclosure, but I'm, I live next door to one of the petitioners for the item number seven, or two item number seven.
Okay, thank you, Mike. I rule that as not a conflict, and in our small community, there's likely many of us close together sometimes. Agenda revisions and approval. I'd entertain February 21st, 2022, meeting agenda approval for tonight.
Move to approve tonight's agenda?
Thank you, Mike. And a second?
All second.
Thank you, Jennifer. January 17th, 2022, meeting minutes approval.
I move to approve this minute.
Thank you, Guy. Thank you, Mike. Great. We have a few more. January 24th, 2022, MOA GBOS Quarterly Meeting Minutes Approval.
Move to approve.
Thank you. And then second for the January 24th?
All second.
Great, thank you, Jennifer. Then we had a January 24th GBOS Special Meeting, re continuation of the January 17th, 2022 Meeting Minutes Approval.
I move to accept this minute.
All second.
Okay, great. Thank you, Guy and Mike. And lastly, February 14th, 2022 GBOS Special Meeting, last Monday, funding for suspension bridge.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. I'll go ahead and move to announcements. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public, and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. Introductions, presentations, and reports. Number one, Anchorage School District Bond Information. Is Kelly Lessons here tonight?
Hi, can you hear me and see me?
I can hear you.
Okay, well, I've turned, I guess you're screen sharing, so I've.
There you are. Yes.
And I just wanted to ask permission to do sort of my normal housekeeping in addition to the bond update before I pivot and do the Hillside Community Council. Do I have the board's permission?
I think so, Kelly, and just time sensitive, so whenever.
Okay, I will, I will do my best to go through it at a breakneck speed. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the biggest, most recent news in ASD is that Dr. Bishop announced a mask optional plan to start on February 28th. A couple of other major points of housekeeping, there's a school climate and connective survey, which is open right now. The lottery school application deadline is open. It will be until March 17th. There is a new business academy starting in fall of 2022 for high school juniors that's going through the CTE department, and they are looking for students who are interested in careers in finance, business, office administration, and so forth. I will send you all of the links, Team GBOS, don't worry. The superintendent's search is ongoing. I believe that today was the application deadline. The board will review those applicants in coming weeks. In other good news, the AEA, so Anchorage Education Association, and Totem both have ratified their tentative agreements, so it's my personal hope that tomorrow the board will support those contracts tomorrow at our board meeting. The other major thing that's happening at tomorrow night's board meeting is the approval of the FY23 budget, so this is the annual budget that will start in July. And briefly, the general fund budget is $549.5 million. It addresses a deficit. It prioritizes something called the people-to-teacher ratio in key educational programs like IGNITE. It focuses on the school board goals, reading, math, and this college career life readiness, and it really redesigns education to focus on learning gaps. It also reflects this ongoing deficit that's being patched over right now with our federal relief dollars. So I will send, or if you open up the chat, I can post links in here after I'm done. So the board will discuss this tomorrow night, and then it will go to the Assembly no later than the first Monday in March. We have a Finance Committee meeting on Wednesday this week, and then another school board meeting Tuesday, March 1st. And now for the bond. Actually, I'll pause. Are there any quick questions on sort of normal housekeeping?
I don't see any hands up. Is there anyone with questions? Please ask.
All right, I'll just keep going. Okay, so one of the items on your ballot in this upcoming municipal election will be a two-year bond proposal from the Anchorage School District. This will be ASD's second two-year bond. Nobody voted on a bond in April of 2021, and this bond has been approved both by the board and the Assembly in the amount of $111.09 million. It includes 31 school projects at 25 different sites, and it really focuses on deferred maintenance and security. It includes a $12 million renovation at Lake Otis that has a core focus on the life skills areas, which meet the needs of students with special needs, and a whole school replacement of Inlet View Elementary School. But again, there are also site improvements and deferred maintenance at a number of other sites, so it's not just a bond that focuses on one or two schools. It is 31 different projects at 25 different sites. The estimated bond taxpayer impact is just under $13 per 100,000. It adds $24.73 per $100,000 of assessed property while retiring 1180. And so one of the key questions you might want to know is why did the board approve this package? And I think you have to step back and think about the larger context. We have aging schools and harsh winters, and that has compounded and led to a backlog of deferred maintenance on more than $2 billion of ASD property. According to one statement of best practices that the board received, we should be bonding at roughly $80 million a year, so this is substantially lower. While it adds slightly more debt, $111 million, than it retires, $102 million, over the same period, the need is there, and the district as a whole has retired more than $100 million more in debt than it's taken on since the FY2011 bond. So we've done well over the last decade. And then when you look at this two-year bond averaged over the two-year period at $55.5 million a year, it's really in line with prior annual bond packages, but remember that that $55 million buys a little bit less, or a lot less now than it did a decade ago. So how do we get this proposal? Annually, ASD evaluates its buildings through two different indices, a Facility Condition Index and an Educational Adequacy Assessment. Then the second thing that happens is that annually the board and the administration approve a six-year plan, and I can drop all of these links. We have the most recent one available on our website. In the bond years, so this year, there is a Capital Improvement Advisory Committee, which is, is filled with people from community members who represent a range of different geographic and professional and community perspectives, and they develop recommendations that go to the superintendent and then to the school board. In the fall, the administration gets that input, presents a proposed bond package to the board. The board has time to consider the recommendation, get that public input, which is really important, and then approve the final bond package. So there are many steps in this bond approval process, and then it goes to the Assembly who supported adding this bond to this year's, this year's election. So that is bond 101 in a nutshell. Please register to vote by March 6th. Ballots go out the 15th and are due by April 5th, and I will pause there for questions. And I believe that Mr. Tom Roth is here from ASD to answer any technical questions that may arise. So thank you for that, Mr. Roth.
Thank you, Kelly, and I do see Mr. Roth here on the guest list. Are there any questions from the board? Mike, go.
I, I think I may have asked this question before, but I'll ask it again. Can you explain how, does this bond affect the, the school bond, the extra school bond repayment mill rate, which we're likely to see this year and we saw last year?
So I think that's one of those technical questions. My understanding is that the state is expected to cover about 36% of our outstanding bonds. So there is, when last year, there was a cost shift to the Anchorage taxpayers because of decisions that happened down in Juneau. I think it remains to be seen what happens with school bond debt in this fiscal year by the current legislature. So I don't really have a direct answer to that question, but maybe Mr. Roth can.
Thank you, member Lessons. Good evening, folks. I'm Tom Roth. I'm the chief operating officer. And, and Ms. Lessons is correct. We, we believe the legislature has communicated their intent to cover this, the state's portion of the bond debt, but again, until, until they act on that sometime this spring, there's no confirmation.
Maybe I can refine my question slightly. Does the, the bond which we'll be voting on in April, will that be things we're repaying in this financial year, or is that for a future year?
So if I might, that's a great question. So when, when the public authorizes through, through the ballot to the school board to, to sell municipal bond debt, the, the district doesn't immediately sell that, that authority. In fact, we're very mindful that once, once we sell that authority, it becomes a taxable requirement. So what we are, what we do with the municipality is we only sell that amount of bond authority that we expect to, to spend during that fiscal year. So it won't be an immediate impact to get to your, to your question, but sometime, we, we generally will, will sell debt in November to, to cover costs that we would expect to, to expand, starting in the spring through the following summer. So hopefully, sir, that answers your question.
I think so, yeah, thank you. So this is really future bonds, and it probably won't affect this year, but last year's did. Well, sorry, two years.
Generally, it'll take, it'll take the district about two and a half to three and a half years to complete all the projects that, that are on a respective bond proposition.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Are there any other questions for Kelly or for Tom? I don't see any other hands. Are there any questions for people that cannot raise their hand? Okay, I think we're, we're all set.
All right. Well, thank you so much for your time. I will say that there is, we have a robust bond website and a robust budget website, and this is, there's a bond flyer that you can download that has a lot of the highlights on it, including a map of where all the different projects are. So that's one of the many things that I can send your way.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Lessons, and thanks for your service. Thank you, Mr. Roth, as well.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Okay, thank you all. Have a great night.
You too. Okay, number two on the agenda, update of housing developments in Girdwood, including Holton Hills. We've had a lot of meetings this month so far regarding these. Who would like to talk to this?
I mean, I'll say one thing briefly. The, the only formal action I'm aware of, or the next piece of formal action, will be a discussion at HLB about disposal, which is currently scheduled to happen in May, but may be pushed back further. That's the only thing I'm aware of in terms of potential decision times or, or, you know, formal process. I think we're going to have this on the agenda, probably definitely on GBOS and probably LUC for the next few months. If anything does come up, we can respond to it quickly and we can share it with the community.
Yes, exactly. Thank you, Mike. That was my understanding as well, so it stays on our agenda for the community to speak to. Would, is there any comment from the board? Or questions? I don't see any hands from the board. Is there anyone in the community that has a question or comment? Karen? See your hand.
Yeah, hi. I just wondered if there was any indication that the group that had presented previously representing the Holton Hills development, if they had any plans to present again before that HLB meeting, being as they were pretty unprepared for the questions that came up during the meeting.
Thank you, Karen. I specifically have not heard, but maybe someone else has. Mike has a hand up.
I just want to say, I think that's a really good idea. I think the, we should definitely, I'll, I can be in contact with them and, and ask that very question. I think it would make a lot of sense.
That'd be great. Thanks for the suggestion as well. Okay, any other questions? I don't see any hands going up and down. Okay, that is it for number two. We'll go to number three, Legislative Report, Senator Roger Holland, Representative Kaufman, Assembly members Waddleton and LaFrance. Let's see. I am not sure who's here, if anyone is here to speak. I don't see any. So Kyle or Mike, if you see anyone come in from the Assembly, just let me know.
Will do.
Please. Okay. Then the next one was our liaison, which we heard from. So number four, Supervisor Reports. Does anyone have any reports? Let's start with Jennifer.
Thanks, Brianna. Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Mike, I skipped over you. Did you have a report?
I have two items. One is the Assembly last week, there was a proposal discussed to provide a tax exemption for new ADU construction across the municipality. There were several questions asked about, it, it unclear how much of that would apply to Girdwood because of the way we raise taxes, and I haven't heard a clear answer from the, from the administration, how they think it would apply. And there were several questions about how this interacts with short-term rentals, so the Assembly made no action on it, and I think it's going to come back in front of them, I believe, next Tuesday on the first. It may be two weeks after that. I don't recall for certain. But it'll come up again. But I did speak to that at the Assembly meeting, and it got quite complex. The other thing I wanted to mention is, I think as people may be aware, the, if we received it, or the Assembly received a report from Anchorage or AWU, Water and Waste Water System Utility, that they turned off the fluoridation in the Girdwood Water System back in March, when they had a problem with a pump. It was turned on temporarily in July, August, and then turned off again. And they informed, I think after questions were asked, they informed the Assembly, they do not intend to turn it back on again until they replace various other parts of the system sometime in 2024. So personally, I feel that the fact they have not, they had not communicated that to us, and as far as they can tell, had no intention of doing so, is a problem. Whatever your opinion on fluorid is, we should know what's in the water system. So there's some activity around that, and I'm sure we'll hear more about that in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, Mike. Guy, do you have anything to report?
No, I just, I would like to say, thank you, Brianna, that, you know, Fire Department is, does a great job, you know, recruiting and bringing in volunteers, and, you know, there's always the, local volunteers are tough to come by, and so I think, you know, just something to consider when we think about our, our housing needs and people, you know, being able to live here and volunteer for, you know, different entities, that, and you keep that in mind because it's, it, it does, it is a limiting factor in our, getting, you know, qualified volunteers down here for the Fire Department.
Thank you, Guy. For my report, I don't have anything for Parks and Recreation or Cemetery outside of the included packet or minutes. I also testified at the Assembly last week regarding the industrial lots, Phase 1, 2, and 3 comments, and also learned of the AWU fluoridation issue that we're going to learn more about, hopefully, in the next week or so. I think that was all. And then Amanda, Kyle will go through your normal report for any roads. So number five, Service Provider Reports. Chief Weston, you're back. We missed you last month. I can kind of hear you. Hi.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Oh, good. It's fixed now. Okay, um, so first, I'll talk about our staffing and that. Currently, we brought online in this last couple of weeks, we now have 13 advanced life support providers, so those are people that can provide cardiac care. So we have, and we additionally have 13 EMT-2s and eight EMT-1s, but adding those additional four, almost five now, advanced life support providers is huge for us, so super happy about that. That's really, it shows the dedication of our volunteers to train. We also picked up a paramedic, so we now have four paramedics that are rotating through. Super happy about that. We have 13 members starting firefighter one training this weekend. It'll go all the way through to September, and we're doing once a month, one week in a month, very much like a guard model. And then we've got 11 members starting firefighter two, and firefighter two is something that we traditionally haven't done, but as we've discovered, if we want to certify to a fire officer level, everyone has to have a firefighter two. We're currently trending about 30 to 35 calls a month. Our call today was, I think, number 73 or 74, so pretty busy. We had two calls today. We just closed on Friday our application process for new members. We had eight applications received, two of which were from Girdwood. And when we talk about, you know, when I look at how many people there actually is in the Girdwood Valley that are potential members, really, we're looking at maybe 600 adults, and then of those, which 600 adults maybe don't have, you know, don't have family obligations or jobs that enable them to volunteer. So, you know, so, you know, we've got at least 11 or 12 of those 600 people, but it would, and then we've got to also look at, I looked at our, how many people move in and out of the valley, and we know that there's a pretty large, you know, percentage of the population that is not here after a year, and so that sort of limited, limits it as well. So there's really a defining number of people that are possibly able to volunteer for the department, so, yeah, good times. So you might have seen me on the news in social media talking about our very old extrication equipment. We did have a failure of cutters that were 22 years old that Senator Stevens had purchased for us 22 years ago, when I was on the department years ago. And that failed on an instant. It did not have an outcome. It does not affect the patient outcome, but this is our second tool failure. Just if you missed all the social media or the media reports, basically, a short, a short story is, although I could make it a super long story, the short story is, years and years ago, in the beginning of time, i.e. 1996, when I started on the department, Chief Tumminell and Chief Chadrick were trying to get funding for extrication. We used to all go down the road in an ambulance, sitting on the Hearst tools. Those same Hearst tools are still on, that I sat on in 1996, are still on our rescue truck, and those are what were in, are in service. Senator Stevens stepped in when the municipality and the state didn't want to fund extrication or rescue equipment on Seared Highway in, around 1999, and funded a rescue truck with equipment. That's the same equipment we still have now. So when all the other departments switched to hydraulics, which is a lighter tool that usually has batteries versus hydraulic fluid, yeah, 13, 14 years ago, we never did because, wow, nobody would fund it. So here we are, 22 years later, we're still using Senator Stevens' equipment. I do a large media outreach. Social media reached 43,000 people on social media, which is a really good social media post. Thank you to KTU for actually putting the story on Super Bowl Sunday. It also got picked up by the radio, although I didn't give a radio interview, so that was super cool. The short, the longest short of all that is huge outreach by lots of people wanting to donate. Absolutely no one from the state of Alaska has called me or wanted to talk. The municipality was able to give us some, their third reserve 13-year-old tool set to borrow on a short-term loan, but if one of their tools go down, we have to give it back. Yeah, so have I sorted out the problem? Am I anywhere better than I was two or three weeks ago? No, other than I now have a 13-year-old reserve, reserve set to use as frontline, which is, I guess, a little better. But no, the, nobody from the state has engaged, and nobody really from the municipality has engaged. And we did ask for this equipment to be included in the Rescue 41 bond, and it was last minute taken off, not by this current administration, but the last administration. So I will say that Senator Sullivan's office has reached out twice to me, and Senator Sullivan is planning a visit. He's also said that they were going to also assist us and maybe talking to some people. I did reach out proactively to, I did talk, brief Senator Machichi before the KTU story, and then with the, with legislator, I did reach out to the legislators myself this week and scheduled a conversation with Senator Holland and Representative Kaufman. So that's where I am with that. If anyone has any questions, I would love to answer questions on this.
Great. Thank you, Chief Weston. That was a lot. Any hands from the board? Uh, I see a hand from the community. Jerry or Carol Fox?
Hi, it's me. I just want to say, I just want to say thanks. That's a big deal to get the new advanced life support people and the new paramedic. That is a big deal, and so thank you. I know you've worked on it very hard, so just thanks.
Thanks. Well, I, you know, it's a lot of work for the members to go through that class, and, and it's a little scary to get people to move up to that point to do cardiac care, but super proud of them. I mean, they are, they are really committed and motivated and really excited. Like, there's really good morale in the department right now. So, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jerry. Anyone else? Anyone on the phones? Okay, I think that is, is all I see, Chief Weston. Well, thanks again for your report.
Okay, thank you.
And all the service. Nope, okay. Next is Police. Chief Ashay, is he here? I see one number, but I don't know. Kyle, do you know?
He is not here. I just talked, texted with him. He is dealing with a work issue right now, so he'll try to call in, and maybe we can get him on the back end.
Okay, thank you. All right, you're up then, Kyle. Rhodes, Parks and Rec.
Sure. I'll start with Parks. We want to give a big thank you to Don Davis. He stepped in to help us with dealing with the trash cans we have throughout the community. We've had a rash of people putting the residential trashes in there, and so he's helped. We've had a rash of people putting the residential trashes in there. And so he's helping us to keep up with that as, as well, as we try to work that into our workload as well. So, um, and he was looking to do some volunteer work for the community. So we appreciate him being out there and helping us with that. And we do make a reminder to the community that those trash cans aren't meant for residential trash. They're meant for people who are out the trails, walking, uh, looking for a place to discard things. They, they can't, they get one or two residential bags in there and they are completely full. And then that leads to additional problems. So, so please try to get your trash to, um, the, uh, transfer station. We also want to thank Aliaska Resort. They are hosting the Throwdown Showdown again, which is a fundraiser for the skate park, and that's been real successful over the years. And we have friends of the skate park with basically our parents and, and writers and of all ages, um, who helped, uh, with this event and then help us with, uh, uh, build projects come spring. Uh, we have, uh, build project scheduled right now for the middle or for the beginning of May, first weekend of May. And then the event itself, the Throwdown Showdown is March 11th and 12th. Um, and there will be a older kids event on Friday night and then, uh, the young grom, uh, young kids on Saturday, which is really always entertaining. So, um, so thank you again to Aliaska Resort. And then, uh, as, as always, Capstone is still providing free COVID testing here, um, on Tuesdays from four to eight P M. And Saturdays 12 to four. And they'll be doing that through March at this time, uh, in that aspect. Um, as always, Margaret and I try to keep up with the maintenance in the parks and, and different things out there. So if you see empty or you see overflowing trash can, um, let us know. And also if you see a tipped over outhouse, feel free to call. Uh, we have a rash of outhouses right now being tipped over. We made, uh, some measures today to hopefully prevent that from happening again, but, uh, we're three weekends in a row. And, uh, also construction sites have experienced it as well. So I guess we lack cows in this town to tip over. So the houses are the next thing. Um, so, uh, we've been dealing with that and trying to get it going and keep them in action for those out there using the trails. Uh, thank you to our groomers who've been out grooming, all volunteers, uh, keeping up with these storms after storms and the variety of different type of storms that we get, uh, which it makes it a challenge. And then also, uh, Chugash Powder Guys, they've been helping out with grooming, um, as they come out to go and groom their cat track. They've helped us with some of those areas, especially the areas that, uh, need to be flattened out. Um, and the, the, uh, little snow machines can't do it, uh, in that aspect. As always, we're working through grants right now. We are, uh, chasing grants, uh, from Park Foundation to Rasmussen. And, uh, and we're closing out grants that we currently have for different trail projects. Um, so, uh, it is spring is always grant time of year. So, um, Margaret and, and I are trying to work through those and, and get those approvals. Tonight we'll be asking about, um, uh, or presenting a grant application that we're seeking for Lions Club Park. Uh, so we'll be working that way. And then with that, GBS has their own grants of their own and, um, the year-end reporting documents have been received and, um, we will, uh, finish reviewing those and then start the contracting for, uh, the 22 grants, uh, with the grant applicants, uh, moving along there. As always, Margaret does a great job of keeping our website and social media updated, um, and, and going. Uh, one thing I wanted to point out before I move into roads is that, uh, Chugash has announced an outage for Friday morning. Uh, it looks like they're going to do that long outage again. It could be from 1 A M. to 5 A M. Um, and so at this point in time, it's scheduled, uh, we do have a series of weather coming in, starting Thursday into Friday. Doesn't look very favorable. Um, so we'll see if that added outage continues. I'm sure they're going to watch that as that, uh, forecast develops better as we get closer to that. But, uh, at this point in time, they look at doing an outage, uh, the early mornings and, uh, and, uh, probably doing the repair work out there on the power line. Road status, uh, it's been a very busy, uh, month of basically winter. Uh, we have a really a, a, a strong amount of snow out there. Uh, today was a sign of how much snow we have. We brought in a blower, which we haven't had to do in 10 years. And, uh, we ran that down Alberg. Uh, our snow storage spots in Town Square are filling and, uh, we're starting to rapidly run out of space. And so, uh, we're going to be getting creative, uh, for this next, uh, 45 days, which we feel is left for the winter season. Um, the avalanches last week, uh, played havoc on us. Our road crew, uh, were coming down from Anchorage. They got to the uh, gates there at Bird at 3:45 and they just closed them because of the avalanche. And so they were stuck on the side. And so, um, that left myself and Bob Wolf. Bob Wolf helped me and we responded basically with pickup trucks and tried to open up as much as we could. Uh, fortunately there was no school, so, uh, that alleviated pressure on us to have that all open in this bus route. Uh, but we really, I thank Bob Wolf for helping us out there. Uh, we were able to get the road crew in later that day and they were able to get going, especially dealing with the hills and things like that. So, so, uh, uh, we appreciate all our snow removal, uh, personnel out there, both on the private side and those working on the contract for the town. Uh, they work long hours and they, they basically chase their tail here with these storms. And they'll be out there at 4 A M. Tomorrow, uh, getting things opened up so people can get to work and school. Um, with, uh, with that, uh, we do have some, uh, interesting weather this week. So we would definitely be prepared. Uh, it does look like, uh, a significant storm is coming on Thursday, Friday, which will have a substantial impact. And so, uh, we're, we're getting prepared for that and we hope people are as well too. Um, budget wise, last month we spent $83,000 with the contractor. It was a very busy month with freezing rain, rain, snow. Drainage issues, all kinds of, basically everything, the best of winter, uh, was thrown out is there. So, uh, we were, uh, constantly busy the whole month. And February looks shaping up to be a busy month as well. And so we're hoping for a nice high pressure zone for a little bit in March. So we can all get out and enjoy that with some sun out there. Um, overall, we've only eight, spent eight percent. It's beginning the new fiscal year of our budget, uh, with, uh, with roads and streets. And so, um, and then with parks, we've only spent 1% of the budget, uh, majority of expenditures are in the summer, uh, when, when we're using the parks. Um, with police, we're getting started there. We are, we do have a, uh, uh, increase there with the, uh, consumer price index related directly to inflation. And I will talk about that later on, um, down the agenda. Um, but that is part of the contract with the Whittier Police. Um, and, and so, uh, but within budget, we're, we're looking good there. And then, um, with fire, uh, the fire department has received their first, uh, quarterly payment, uh, for the year. And so, uh, the budget along fire is right where it should be. So, so that's, uh, sort of the briefing for where we're at with operations. Um, open up to any questions.
Thank you, Kyle. Uh, let's see. I do see one question. Go for it to Mike.
Hi. It's not a question. It's just a, just a comment. I just wanted to secondly, thanks for, Bob, for helping out last week when we had the, the avalanche and the road crews. It was, um, even, even though, uh, we obviously had quite a lot of difficulty that day, we still ended up in a better position than Anchorage has been for the last week or so. So, uh, it's very striking when you hear all the complaints from the city, how well, uh, everything works here. It's just another reminder about, uh, local control, I think, of our great team we have. So thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Absolutely. And well said. I was, it was just tremendous. All the work that was going on in our town. And thanks to Bob Wolf stepping up again to help. Any other comments or questions for Kyle? I also wanted to thank Don Davis for volunteering his time and, uh, for the Throwdown Showdown. They need volunteers also. You have time to sign up for that. Let's see. Not seeing anything else. We can go to public comment. Persons offering public comment must state their full name, name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. If you have any public comment tonight? Um, please raise your hand. I see Kathy. Kathy, go ahead. Still needed Kathy.
Sorry.
There you are.
Yeah, um, I have, uh, my comment essentially is that I want to say thank you to everyone who's been working so hard on, in every area that we have already talked about at this meeting. But also it gave me, um, rise to a question that I was wondering, I've talked to one other person. Uh, this has to do with the AWWU issue that, and I'm wondering if, uh, Mike or, or you or Brianna has heard anything about people complaining about, kind of a sulfur smell to their water. Where it's coming into the house. Uh, it's been getting worse and worse over the last few months. And I've heard someone else comment on that too. So anyway, that's something I was making a note to myself to write to you about. And, uh, if anybody hears anything like that, I'd be very interested to, to know. So thank you.
Oh, thank you, Kathy. That's very important to notes. I haven't read through, uh, the full document yet, but I don't know if anyone else has any answer to that right now. I'll go continue public comment. Soren.
Hi, everyone. Uh, this is Soren Worth, um, Girdwood resident. And, uh, I'm just wanted to summarize, uh, our meeting that we're, a town hall meeting that we had the other night, um, about a week ago. And, uh, it was a great meeting. We had about 75 to 80 people show up, uh, either in person or on Zoom. Uh, Mike Edgington and John, uh, Weddleton, our assembly member were both there. Uh, we did record comments on butcher paper and I believe, uh, Emma Kramer put those on the Girdwood Facebook page for everyone to see. And I encourage folks to go take a look and just scan through those, um, comments, uh, that people made regarding, um, Girdwood's, uh, kind of current situation with, um, community planning and the Holton Hills project. Uh, essentially, um, some kind of key takeaways where, uh, many people, uh, talked about social service needs. And, um, you know, that Girdwood represents this broad span of, of people from different incomes. And, uh, also, uh, local infrastructure needs, um, that need to be addressed. Uh, there's, um, a lot of sentiment toward, uh, a Girdwood area plan and, um, getting that together. Um, and then, uh, we had heard lots of really creative ideas for community development. So, um, it was great meeting. We want to follow up. Uh, we, um, uh, we're encouraged to hold a, uh, planning and zoning meeting in Girdwood. Um, so, uh, and hopefully the board can take that up. We also, um, you know, heard a lot of comments supporting the Girdwood area plan. So hopefully that can, um, be addressed. It's kind of been shelved. And John Walton, Weddleton had a lot to say about that. Uh, and then finally, um, you know, the infrastructure concerns. That's something that, uh, can be brought up with, uh, planning and zoning, obviously. Uh, we would love to have another smaller meeting with locals, um, to carry forward on some of the ideas that were brought forward. And, uh, keep planning. So, um, yeah, thank you so much, uh, for, uh, for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Worth, for participating tonight and giving us the update. Any other public comments tonight? Anyone from the phone? I don't see any others. And Soren, your hand's still up, but I, okay, Mike, go ahead.
Hi. It's not a public comment. I just wanted to respond to one thing that Soren said. Um, I think Soren said that the area plan has been shelved. That is not the case at all. It's still actively being worked on. We're just at a, we're at a kind of lull between two points. We're, um, we have some technical work, which we're going to be working on on March. Um, the appropriate people are not available, um, this month until next month. So, uh, we're not going to have much. We do have a meeting this week, this Wednesday, although there's not actually much to discuss. Um, and, uh, we're also working with the planning department to sort of finalize exactly what's needed because we've been thrown around a little bit by various requirements from planning. So we hopefully have that finalized as well by the time we have a, we'll have a full meeting in March. We might have a short meeting this week, but, uh, we'll have a full meeting in March. But there's a lot of work has been done and we're not that far from finishing really. So I just wanted to correct that misunderstanding.
Thank you for the clarification, Mike. Okay. We'll go to old business, number six, permitting for Girdwood Forest Fair 2022. Karen Zaccaro.
Hi. Thanks for having me tonight. Um, I was glad to hear that Tommy O'Malley, um, Minister of Paperwork Extraordinaire for the Forest Fair, uh, made it to the last meeting where I did not. But I am now taking over for the Forest Fair paperwork, uh, as part of the board for Girdwood Forest Fair. And we are, we're going to have a fair this year. That's our intent. And we are starting in the initiation phase of getting, um, all the permits and applications. We're starting to get ready to process those. We've had uh, one meeting with Kyle and Margaret to kind of get ourselves organized since we haven't had a fair for two years. And have made, uh, initial outreaches to our partners, Aliaska Resort. And, um, the vendor process has sort of started underway. And we are also internally as a committee reviewing our site plan, the actual map site plan and then the document of the site plan that kind of explains our operational plan for the whole Forest Fair event. The event is scheduled for July 1st, 2nd and 3rd. And so then our weekend cleanup would be June 25th and 26th. And so our intent is tonight, I'd be happy to just answer any questions that I can, let, with you, the understanding, we're kind of at the beginning of our process. And then over the next couple of months, I'll come for updates. And then by April, I expect to come with the plan to submit to you for full review. So then we could actually hope for, um, approval or, you know, final action, um, in May. Still giving us time since the event's not until, you know, July. That still gives us time to catch up on any um, miscellaneous things that need, um, additional attention before the June meeting. For, I, I come with the assumption, everyone knows what Forest Fair is all about, but I'll just, my kind of two cents is it's going to be either the 45th or the 48th annual Forest Fair. It depends how you count, whether we count the years in between that we didn't get to have a fair. Um, and it, in my mind, it's one of the kind of well, most well-known community traditions for our whole community. Lots of volunteers come out, 300 to 500 people from the community come out to participate, volunteer, just hang out. There's lots of people that that's the only time of year they see a bunch of their neighbors. And it's also something that the community of Girdwood as a four-season resort, as an economic tourist engine. It's one of the things we're best known for. It's Girdwood Forest Fair and Aliaska Resort. Those are our two kind of claims to fame. So it's a very important to the community and it's very important to the kind of fabric of Girdwood to carry on these kind of traditions. Traditions are like in a family. It's kind of the glue that holds you together. So in a way, Forest Fair is kind of the glue that can hold us together. So I will just go ahead and stop. That's my update and I'd be happy to ask it, uh, answer any questions or even just note them so I can get, uh, the greater committee input before we do our permit.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Karen, and for the outline and timeline coming up before July, June cleanup day. I do see a hand up for Guy.
Yeah, I just want to say thanks, Karen, for taking this on. It's a big, big task, but very important. Um, between now and, you know, as you're permitting this and getting it going, do you need help? And if so, can you, um, provide a, um, you know, how somebody would reach out and, and help in this early phase of this?
That's a good question. My first, um, I would first go to the Girdwood Forest Fair website and there are, um, links to different kinds of information. You can contact us through the website. That would be my first go-to. If you can't, if that's not easy for you, or that's not the kind of thing you like to do, it's always fine to just reach out personally to anyone that you know is on the Forest Fair Committee. And, um, they might get mad at me for tagging them, but just go ahead and reach out to Tylee Bell or Tylee Love, um, Mike Angerson, Tommy O'Malley, Shyne Hertfendahl, Terry Atkins, any of those folks, Sally Messing, Bob Messing, those kind of core people, if you know them, you can reach out to them with a comment anytime. But if you're not sure about that, please go ahead and go on through the website.
Hey, thanks, Karen. I don't see any other hands. Is there anyone on the phone that has a question? All right. Well, we'll look forward. All right, well, we'll look forward to further updates.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, number seven, Agenda Item LUC 2111-08, second presentation request for GBOS Resolution of Support for Project 2022-0014: Dimensional Variants for Development Within the Stream Protection Setback at 515 Vale Drive. ZBEA meeting is scheduled for March 10, 2022. We have Mike or Alexandra presenting.
This is, this is Osman. Alex is here with me, too. And, yeah, I'm, real quick, before I totally dive in, it looks like I'm not able to share my screen here for this, so I'll kind of course correct because we made a few updates.
Let me set you up, Mike, so you can do that. Just a second.
Oh, super. Right on. Thanks, guys.
And it is also in the packet, so.
It is, yeah, yeah. We made a few updates to the site plan just for visual purposes as a result of some of the discussion that came up at the last week's Land Use Committee.
Go ahead, Mike, try now.
Oh, yeah, there we go. Okay.
I'm going to get off here. There you go.
Okay, right on. Thanks, guys. Okay, so, yeah, we're requesting the GBOS Resolution of Support for Dimensional Variants within the stream bank setback zones on our property at 515 Vale Drive. We presented at last week's Land Use Committee, and our request for Land Use Committee recommendation to GBOS for that resolution of support passed. Some, some great questions and comments came up last week, and we're going to do our best here to address a lot of that right, right from the get-go at this presentation. So the variance that we're requesting would allow us to construct a pretty modest little two-story addition to our house in the southeast corner. And the Asbeld be kind of a pity corner to this, to this deck structure. It's gonna, it's a small addition. It's going to basically allow us to have an entryway that's, you know, that's not like walking into our basically main part of our house with boots on and such. We'll have a small utility room for laundry facilities and whatnot, and a storage closet. In addition to that, we are requesting variance to construct a permeable landscape pad off the northwest corner. So we're talking about this area here beyond where this existing deck structure is. This is, it's a very poorly drained portion of our lot, which in addition to making it totally unusable for any sort of development or use for us, also raises concerns about any damage from flooding and whatnot. It was it's complete standing water during the flood event in October of 2021, as I'm sure lots of people in this valley experienced. And finally, we are requesting some variance to construct some accessory structures in the rear of our property back in the east part here. You can see, just at a, you know, quick glance, that this part of the lot is severely encumbered by these stream bank setbacks. And in the site plan, we'll go a little further into the placement of each of the structures. A little bit of background on our lot here. So again, as you can see, there's, there's a creek that bisects the lot. There's also this creek underneath the power line at the rear of the property. The creek itself is actually almost entirely off of our lot, but because of the extent of the setback, affects us pretty significantly, to the extent that there's actually this portion in the middle of the east side of our lot there where the setbacks actually overlap. And then, of course, in the front of the property here, the house was constructed prior to the setbacks. And, you know, I can't speak a lot to the thinking at the time, but I can tell you that what we have now, as a result of all that, is this tiny little quadrant of the house is the only portion where we could construct any future additions or modifications to the structure without, without being in violation of the stream bank setback ordinances. So, all that said, pretty limited options here with what we're dealing with. A few numbers that we thought are relevant and help illustrate why we are an exceptional case. Front, rear, and side setbacks on most Girdwood lots typically encumber about thirty-eight percent of a parcel in this GR2 zone. So, you know, what that means is our neighbors with no streams present are able to enjoy about sixty-two percent of their property for use and development. Our lot, however, total setback encumbrance is about eighty percent, so we only have twenty percent of our lot area available for development, so we feel it's pretty exceptional. About, what, forty-two percent of encumbrance associated with this, the presence of these two streams. And, yeah, so just like I mentioned, you know, we're severely limited in our ability to complete any additional construction. So these are kind of some stack factors that, that brought us to where we are today. So scrolling down and looking at the site plan first, we'll just do a quick overview just to orient folks. I don't know how much anyone's had an opportunity to look at this in detail, but it's kind of a lot going on. So first and foremost, these areas that are shaded in this blue, this kind of hashed blue, these are parts of the project that will require dimensional variance from the stream bank setback. So here's the permeable surface pad I mentioned. A portion of the addition that was mentioned, you know, it's not the entirety of, of the project that we are seeking to complete. This, this little tiny portion of this proposed sauna structure that pokes out, and then the entirety of the pad area associated with this hot tub structure. These areas that are in hashed red, these, these polygons, the area contained within those, that's that twenty percent of unencumbered land that I referenced. So you can see basically what we have going on is, is just kind of limited area when you factor in other setbacks and other, other factors. So to, oh, and I guess lastly, what I want to point out and what's different from what's in the meeting packet. I apologize that I wasn't able to get this information submitted prior to this meeting. This updated site plan was not submitted to the Planning Department or their associated agencies because by the time, you know, we incorporated all this as a result of some of the discussion last week, it was past the time for submissions, past the deadline. So we intend to incorporate this information to our presentation at the Zebra hearing on March 10. And primarily, what I'm referring to is these dimensions here, so I'll zoom in a little bit. Start over here. So for example, showing that this distance, six feet eleven inches, is the extent of stream bank buffer that would, that would remain after the proposed development, such as the thirteen foot. So I'll just start here because we're in this corner. The addition of this entryway here and the storage area. Thick black lines, that's foundation. This is a, a surface staircase. So no foundational work, no subsurface disturbance associated with that. Looking at just the foundational work, the, the closest we would get to the stream is thirteen feet zero inches on this corner, and then, as you can see, it's significantly farther as you, as you kind of work your way through the proposed structure. This six foot eleven from this corner here by the stairs, again, the stairs are just a surface disturbance. There's no associated subsurface disturbance going on there. And we feel it's of note that this area actually is already a pretty minimally vegetated area. It's been used since well before our time in this property as a soft surface just pad. It's a a trail kind of to access the rear of the property for maintenance and upkeep and things. So we don't have to tear out a bunch of vegetation to make this happen. It's, it's already kind of just like a gravel footpath basically going through here. So moving to the rear here, as, as we visit these couple of structures, one thing I want to point out first and foremost is the dimensions proposed, this twelve foot by ten foot. That's, that's roughly like the maximum extent of the size of the structure that we're proposing that we envision. And those dimensions are actually, they incorporate the pad, any like pad development or vegetation clearing needing to be done associated with the construction of these various structures. So, okay, so the sauna, we can nearly fit a proposed sauna structure within this acceptable unencumbered polygon, strangely shaped as it may be. The northeast corner, this, this, this blue shaded triangle, this, this distance here on this northeast corner is, is two, two feet four inches, this, on this northern edge. So that's, that's what it would protrude into the stream bank setback zone in that area, leaving twenty-two feet eight inches of stream bank protection to this creek at the rear of the property. It's a pretty minimal variance request there associated with that one. The hot tub is certainly the most probably significant variance that we're requesting, just because it does fall in an area that's, that is, is so encumbered by setbacks that they overlap. As you can see, I'm, I've shown a couple of dimensions here of just this proposed configuration, and this is on the list because we were encouraged at the time of initiating this process that it was certain that we incorporate any potential future plans. So what that means in, in real terms is that we don't, we don't have, like, we haven't purchased a hot tub. We don't have plans to go out and purchase a hot tub immediately after this is decided on. But we thought that maybe someday it would be a potential use for the rear of our property where we can maintain privacy and, and free use of our property as we would like. We placed the hot tub where it is so as to roughly try to, you know, have minimal or equal disturbance to the setback area so it wouldn't favor one, one side or the other there. A really important point I want to bring up, really great comments and discussion at the Land Use Committee surrounded any sort of planning or considerations to the maintenance of the hot tub and like the water and chemicals that are associated with maintaining something like a hot tub. Obviously, very concerning when you're talking about stream bank protection areas and creeks and being removed from the house as it is. As I said, we don't, you know, we don't have the hot tub. We aren't immediately trying to engage in this part of the plan, but we certainly are concerned about if we, if we were to place this back here, that we would do it environmentally responsibly, and, you know, what that looks like, I don't know, probably striving for, you know, some sort of surface piping and containment so that we aren't causing any unintentional or undue environmental degradation back here. Last thing I want to point out about this site plan that's a little confusing, I recognize that. There's a shed listed, and our original variance application, the language in there stated that we were seeking variance for the shed. That's incorrect. That was, I don't remember if that was a typo or it was a relic of an early version of this plan. You know, it's our first time doing any of this type of thing, so we've certainly been learning a lot along the ways. So to clarify, the shed that's listed in there falls entirely within a permissible development area, unencumbered by setbacks. The dimensions listed, again, are maximum dimensions that we would consider building a shed. It was really just to see like how big can we, what are the dimensions of this area that we could even build and what, what, what could you put in there? It also further demonstrates the need for variance to do basically any development back there aside from a shed on our property. And then, kind of the last thing I really want to dive into about the, you know, as far as dimensions and whatnot go, this is a really important and critical part of our plan. This whatever color salmon type colored structure here, this is the deck on the north side of the property. It currently encroaches so significantly that only two feet eight inches of buffer is left between the high water line and the edge of this deck. Similar to these stairs back here in the southeast part of the, part of the property, you know, it's all surface structure. But that's, that's such a, that's just a, that's a tiny, that's not even a setback, you know? So we are proposing as part of this plan, this development plan, we're going to remove this deck that'll afford the setback all the way back to nine feet seven inches. This bump out that you see here, it's not actually foundational. That's just, it's a chimney that comes out about two to three feet off the ground and goes up. It doesn't, like, I mean, we can plant grass and forbs and things underneath there and restore this area to more native vegetation and offer better stream bank protection than currently exists. The quick math on that is, we're going to provide an additional six feet eleven inches of surface stream bank protection, and this deck is about twenty-five feet long. A little bit of additional special considerations about our development plan in this lot in particular. One of the most appealing qualities of this lot to us, and we think, you know, why a lot of us like the homes that we have in Girdwood, is the feeling of kind of being tucked away in the forest due to the extent of large trees, a lush understory, and being fortunate to be setback from the yard a little bit as we are. We've outlined in, in a clearing plan that was submitted to Watershed Management at their request, and throughout our variance application narrative, that it's our intent to develop our property in such a way as to retain that forested character and minimize disturbance to the existing healthy forested ecosystem. I myself am a forest ecologist by profession. I'm well aware of the benefits of undisturbed vegetation to things like erosion control, mitigation of disturbance associated with floods, and, and providing cover and protection for anadromous fish which exist in this primate creek here that bisects our lot. Both Alex and I are, are very dedicated to responsible development, whatever development happens on our lot. We take a lot of pride in, in caring for the land. Just a couple, I'd like to just address a few relevant past resolutions in some language that sort of, that go in line with what we're requesting here. The original GBOS response to the new stream bank setback ordinance in 2018, the language in there really, it, it kind of, it highlighted this idea that, you know, the Girdwood Valley is unique from maybe other communities in Anchorage municipality, and that we have relatively small lots. The valley itself is, is pretty confined and limited availability for development. And, and we have a very high relative density of streams going through the, the valley and these lots and whatnot. Because of those considerations, it was pointed out that there would be a need to allow for sort of some flexibility for some of these properties that are going to inevitably be disproportionately affected by the 2018 stream bank ordinance. There's also been a couple of recent past requests for variance from stream bank setback that were supported by GBOS, one of which recognized the benefits of permeable earthwork and landscaping to flood mitigation on that property, similar to what we're requesting here on this permeable surface pad. They also, that, that request that was supported also cited conversations with the Watershed Manager at the time who recognized that the removal of existing non-conforming structures from within the stream bank setback zone should be viewed positively due to the improvements to stream and bank maintenance drainage. Again, the extent of stream, stream bank protection that we're looking to afford here on the north end is, we feel significant. There was a, there was another resolution passed and supported by GBOS for the, the reason, one of many reasons, was the existence of multiple setbacks on that property made it very difficult to develop without encroaching into some of these setback areas. Also, the proposed construction, which sought to encroach the stream setbacks in that request, was proposed in such a way as to basically minimize the impacts to existing vegetation and maintain considerations to impacts to view shed and drainage of neighboring parcels, which is also a priority and outlined numerous times throughout our project proposal here. Okay, so that's, that's the, that's my part of it. that's my part of it. And now we're happy to answer any questions about any of this stuff as presented to folks and, um, and clear anything up if I misspoke or wasn't clear.
Great. Thank you, Mike. I had C two hands and you did just under twenty minutes. It's great. Guy. Guy, you're still muted if you have anything.
Sorry about that. Yeah. Hey, Mike. I, I, I appreciate the effort you put into this and I attended your, um, presentation during the land use committee meeting. I did notice you added a bridge there and I just, um, I don't know if you've talked efficient game yet and about the, you know, stream crossing there, but that'll be an issue that you probably, you know, they're going to want to address. I don't think this is anadromous waters. I know it's in the AFFI, um, the freshwater fish inventory for the state, but, um, I think they still, um, will have, you know, comments on your, on your bridge or your stream crossing there. And, um, your permeable, permeable, um, space here that you're putting the front, could you speak to that just a little bit, like the design of that?
Sure. Yep. Yeah. Um, so design wise, basically what we're, we're hoping to do is, um, is build it up in such a way that it, it helps to divert, continue to divert water away from our house as well as, uh, kind of divert it back into the streams and, just keep it from being this, just kind of wet seepy area. Being permeable, obviously allowing water to flow through and not creating additional concerns for runoff that's associated with, you know, like a uh, concrete pad or anything more hard surface in that way. Does that, I'm not sure, does that address your concerns?
Yeah, no, uh, do you intend to like bring in fill for it and, you know, gravel and that kind of thing to allow for that permeability?
Yeah. Yes, sir. Yeah. Yep. Exactly. Definitely. Um, I have talked with somebody in town, uh, previously about, you know, the potential for improvements in that area, um, and what that could look like. And, uh, yeah, we would definitely gravel and, and clean fill and then landscape the surface, um, in such a way that it, it kind of, you know, doesn't create this undue impact to the view shed. Like we're not looking to basically clear out a big area in the front and have a big gravel pad sticking out like a sore thumb. We want it to fit in. We will just want to create some improvements to the property.
And your stream crossing as well, you know, um, that may require certain heights for flood stage and, and debris and that kind of thing. I assume you've considered that. I, I noticed it wasn't on the earlier packet.
Oh, yes, sir. Yep. Um, that one actually came about after some comments from the watershed manager, uh, who obviously cited that we would be needing a bridge to access the rear of the property. And he just requested that we, that we put that on there.
Thank you.
Hey, Mike Edgington.
Hi, thanks. Um, thank you for the, for the updates on this. I was actually going to ask, there was one other dimension I was interested in, but, uh, I think I can kind of guess it. It's the, the distance from the corner of the, um, property, uh, just immediately to the north of the stairs to the stream, because that's kind of the closest point in that area. I'm going to guess it's around eight feet, but something like that. But, um, that, thanks very much for the presentation. I think that the bridge is definitely a, a, a bridge crossing, um, parallel to the, across the stream, parallel to the stream is one accepted uses under the stream setback, uh, regulations. And I did have a comment. I know the previous owner of my property, which is what a hundred feet or so further upstream, um, definitely, um, said there's been fish or was this small sightings in the stream, uh, in the past, although I personally haven't seen it. Are you, I just want to ask again if you're, is the removal of the deck something you're, um, the deck on the north side of the property, is that something you're, um, guaranteeing you will do under this plan so that there's a net decrease in, uh, net move away from the stream?
Yes. Yep. Thanks, Mike. Um, that, that is for sure. Uh, the one, the, the point I'll make about it is that currently there's extra, there's a door here to the exterior.
Okay.
Um, so part of our, we have an interior redevelopment plan of this staircase here. It's, it's not a very suitable staircase as it is at the moment. So in doing that, we're going to remove this door. This will become a wall, no longer have any need for that. And also we desire that restoration like I mentioned.
Okay, thanks. And, um, and obviously the staff packet is not yet out. What was the general level of support from watershed management for the plan?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, thanks for bringing that one up too, Mike. So early on, when we first were going through the, the, the stages of proposing or developing our, um, variance application, we had conversations with a representative from watershed management, uh, who actually was out at, at our house and part of the, the, uh, as-built survey that occurred last fall. So he was familiar with the property and, um, conversed with him and, and he was in general support of, of pretty much most things we were proposing. He gave us some good guidance on, uh, the discussion points and things that we want to highlight. Uh, we also had great insight from the planning department. And, and then most recently, uh, we had a little bit of back and forth, just conversations and clarification with a different individual from watershed management who is part of the reviewing panel. And he just reached out to request that we provide, uh, like a clearing plan, a vegetation management plan associated with any of this proposed development.
Thanks.
Thank you. Jennifer, your hand up.
Yeah, thanks again for this. Uh, I know this has been a lot of talking about this. I've now, um, heard this presentation a couple of times. So, um, thanks for all the work you've done on this. At, uh, I, I guess I'm a little unclear when I hear you talking about the setbacks. Were you not, um, made aware of these setbacks when you bought the property or did they change after you bought the property?
Uh, that's a great question. We, no, we were not made aware of any of this. To be quite frank, had we not gone down this road of trying to, uh, propose, you know, some addition to the house, I, I'm not sure that we, that anyone would have sought to help us become aware of it. Not that it's anyone's responsibility but our own, but no, we weren't aware of any of this, um, during the purchase of the property.
Thanks for that.
Any other questions from the board? Mike?
Uh, just to comment on that, on that last point, um, I find that a little, I, I was surprised by that because the, um, there was actually a, an action with planning and zoning um, to change the plat note in order to achieve the sale of this property. So there was very recent, uh, I think it's, it's probably cross-referenced in your application. So just before, you know, before it was sold, there was a, uh, there was a, a, a change to plat note itself, I think, as a, as part of the sale process. So, um, it's disappointing you weren't made aware of that.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. I'll speak to that real quick. Actually, um, I should, I should clarify what we were aware of. Uh, so, so that process, we now understand a lot better, obviously. Uh, that process was initiated by the sellers and it was, we were made aware that it was, that it was, that it was a process that was ongoing, that there was, uh, we weren't really provided many details about the nature of the issue. More just that we were waiting for a decision to be made about, um, that there was a deck. I guess basically my understanding at the time was that there was like the deck structure was infringing on a setback. But the extent of setbacks that were present on the property, uh, was, we weren't made aware of. Wasn't even aware that there was a creek that was considered a creek at the rear of the property there. So I guess all that to say that we're aware that there was some issue going on with a structure being where it shouldn't have been, but, but the nature of all that and the extent and the, and the possibility of being able to develop anywhere on this lot was not, was not made, um, known to us really.
Thanks. Yeah, we're, we're all learning from this.
Jennifer.
Okay, and, um, I think I had one other question I forgot about, uh, connected to the conversation that already came up at land use about that hot tub and, um, leaving aside how hypothetical it might be, the variance, getting a variance for it makes it, uh, a possibility. And so therefore it has to be discussed as if it is happening, not as, you know, with the assumption that it won't happen or isn't going to happen or isn't going to happen anytime soon. And so given that, we've got, I think lingering questions from the land use discussion about the drainage of that hot tub between two streams. And again, regardless of like what you guys necessarily have planned, once this variance is approved, it, anything can go in there that can be called a hot tub and it can have any kind of chemicals in it. So could you just, uh, speak to, do you know anything about whether or not it can be drained safely between those two streams?
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up again, Jennifer. I definitely agree that it's something that we're not trying to get like a blank check here or anything. As far as the specifics to specifically address your question, if it can be safely drained between the two streams, we don't know anything about that. I've never owned a hot tub. I don't really know anything about the installation of a hot tub. Uh, it's certainly our hope that we'd be able to work with professionals to address that and, and devise a system that would allow for safe drainage. As far as the specifics at this time, unfortunately, we, we aren't able to offer anything to you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Osman, for all the answers and thorough presentation. Uh, what is the will of the body?
I will, um, read a, um, I'll read a resolution into the, a proposed resolution into the record by way of a motion.
Let me pull up that resolution. Uh, Mike, could you, uh, uh, pull down your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, thanks. Um, resolution twenty twenty-two dash X of the Gerwood Board of Supervisors, a resolution in support of dimensional variance for development within the stream protection setback at five hundred and fifteen Vale Drive. Whereas Gerwood is a small and densely developed community within the municipality of Anchorage, located near Glacier Clark, Clark Valley with limited developable land. And whereas the existing home at five hundred and fifteen Vale Drive was built in nineteen eighty-three on a parcel that is now encumbered by multiple setbacks to the extent that only twenty percent of the land is developable for conforming structures. And whereas the lot at five hundred and fifteen Vale Drive is bisected by two unnamed anadromous streams with setbacks that overlap that make additions to the property without encroachment of the setbacks impossible. And whereas the exterior walls of the proposed three hundred and sixty-seven square foot addition on the south side of the home are thirteen point nine two feet from the stream. And the construction of the deck in addition will involve minimal foundational encroachment into the stream setback. And whereas the removal of the existing deck on the north side of the home will reduce encroachment as it currently protrudes, protrudes six point five feet into the setback zone for a length of twenty-five foot, twenty-five point two feet. And the area will be revegetated with native species to promote the health of the stream. And whereas the additional permeable surface pad to the west of the home will allow for stormwater to flow into the creek drainage. And whereas the outbuildings at the back of the property are conceptual only with no plans for construction and will be properly permitted in areas not to exceed the requested six point five feet relief from stream setback requirements. And whereas presentation of hearing of this item occurred at the Gerwood Land Use Committee regular meeting on November the eighth, two thousand twenty-one and February the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and at the Gerwood Board of Supervisors regular meetings on November the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one and February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. And whereas the land use committee at their regular meeting on February the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two voted thirteen in favor, zero opposed and two abstaining to recommend that GBOS provide this resolution of support. Therefore, the Gerwood Board of Supervisors supports the request of variance from AMC twenty-one dot zero seven dot zero two zero dot eight nine at five hundred and fifteen Vale Drive by a vote of X Y at their regular meeting of February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I don't know if this is the appropriate time. I, I don't believe the state recognizes those as anadromous streams. So I don't, I don't know if it matters really. I, I support this, but it's something that should be considered.
Okay. Thank you, Guy. If you second it, then we can have a discussion and.
I, I will second that.
Great. And note here, any other discussion?
I have a question for, I have a question for Guy since he's the expert here. Um, is there a, where, where would we actually find out one way or the other? Is there a definitive identification of those streams?
Yes. Yeah. If you go on the ADF and G site, you can, um, pull up the map there and those, I think they list, um, in the freshwater fish inventory, they list dollies in there, which, um, some might argue are anadromous or not, but it's not listed in the actual catalog itself. So if you look at the, um, ananorous water catalogs in ADF and G, those streams aren't listed until further down, you know, you get into where they, um, pour into Glacier Creek or whatever.
I was going to ask if we could, we could get staff to work with the watershed management just to get clarity on that. And maybe we can pass it conditional on that correction or not correction.
Yeah, no.
And Kyle's hand is up too. It's a great idea. Kyle?
Yeah, uh, I know downstream from it, we definitely have to, we're looking at replacing the culvert on Stowe this summer and, uh, we have full engineered plans for fish passage because fishing game required us of it. Now, as you go upstream, sometimes the mapping, um, as the tributary splits, they will, uh, not map that as fish stream, but definitely where that tributary, those tributaries come together, which is where you get the stow. You know, they're, they're collecting like three different streams there. Um, and then it pours down into what we call, uh, locally called Tanaka Creek. So, yeah, we, at this point in time, uh, we are required to do fish passage at Stowe, which is just probably about a half mile down the road from, from this parcel.
Yeah, I, I, I think with, um, anything in the, uh, freshwater fish inventory, you, you need to, and pretty much anywhere in streams in Alaska, there's going to be fish in them. You definitely have to have fish passage and, and take that in consideration, you know, when they're building their bridge.
Thank you everyone for those comments and I don't see any other hands from the public or on the phone. Mike?
I did have one other comment on, um, so in the, uh, paragraph where it talks about outbuildings, I think the, the, the statement there is that, um, it would conform to the six point five feet relief, um, from the stream setback requirements. I may be misreading that, but I think I'm, I'm seeing that compared to the six point five feet, uh, mentioned higher up. And that sounds like, you won't get any closer than six point five feet. But obviously that's not the way the plans are drawn. The plans are drawn that you won't get any closer than eighteen feet. I just wondered if you could clarify that of what you're actually asking for in that paragraph. That's the petition.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good, um, good catch, Mike. I think that's a, that is most certainly a typo there. Yeah, the eighteen feet is a correct value.
Okay, so that should be eighteen feet?
Yes.
I guess I'm, I would then, we'll go through this formally. I just request based on what I read, if we could change that line to eighteen feet and then get a, a clarification on the status of the streams as to whether they're anadromous. I can't pronounce that very well. Anadromous? Anadromous, uh, and whether they're anadromous or not, um, if staff could do that for us. With those two, um, potential changes, uh, I propose that we amend it that way.
Yeah, we can work on both of those.
Thank you. Do we need a second on the amendment before?
Well, I, perhaps if Guy's okay with that, I can just make a change to my original proposal. So, since I passed. Well, perhaps if Guy's okay with that, I can just make a change to my original proposal. So since I passed, I called a motion in the first place. So with those amendments, I'm going to make a slight addition, a change to my initial proposal with those two changes in there. If Guy is okay with that.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thanks, Guy. I see no other hands. I'd like to call Kyle for a roll call vote.
Sure. Brianna Sullivan.
Yes.
Mike Edgington.
Yes.
Guy Wade.
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard.
Yes.
That resolution and motion passes 4-0.
Okay. Thank you, Mike Osman and Alex Robinson, for all of your time and effort in this.
Yeah, thanks, everybody, for all the helpful comments and support. We really appreciate it.
Okay, moving to number eight. HLB draft 2022 annual work program and five year management plan are being prepared and draft is available to review online. HLB plans to present and hold a public hearing at the HLBAC meeting in March. Date TBA, and the link is there in the packet. Does anyone have any comments about the HLB plan? Mike?
Yeah, I have, I think there's, there's a lot in here and there's probably a lot we should discuss. I think there's enough in here that perhaps we should consider a work session. Maybe it's, maybe it only needs to be an hour between now and the March meeting, just so we can go through it in detail. My understanding is that the May, the May meet, sorry, the March meeting, where it will actually, whether it would be public comment, will be after, likely after our next meeting. Our March meeting, it should be towards the end of the month. So I think we have time to do that. And then so rather than try and go through the whole document now, we could perhaps do that in a work session and then come up with potential comments and then just discuss them and vote on them at our next, at our May meeting. Sorry, March meeting. I keep saying May, March meeting. I'm wishing the winter away.
Thank you, Mike, for that suggestion. I think that would greatly benefit all of us. And they have a meeting this Thursday, but it's a work session.
And actually, as presented, yeah, and as presented on the screen here, it looks like the, the vote may, their public hearing may be pushed until April. But that will probably be before our April GPS meeting.
Okay.
So I think that time scale still works.
Okay. So if we'd like to discuss any of that further, I think that we could work with staff to coordinate a work work session of our own to discuss the HLB plan. Any other comments from the board? I don't see any. Okay, I'll go to
Actually, can I just say, can I just say one more thing on that? The reason I'm proposing more work for all of us on the board is this really is a very, you know, HLB obviously is the major landholder holder in the valley. And the plans they have and the proposals they have has a huge impact on the community. So I think we need to sit down and really talk through this. And we're not going to be able to do that in a regular meeting. So I think a work session is necessary. Although I hate to schedule more time and work for us all.
Thanks, Mike, but it would make us more concise and have a unified voice when we do participate in the next public comment or whatever it is at the HLB meetings. Guy, your hand is up?
No, I, I just, I agree with you, Brianna, and Mike. I think it'd be a great idea for a special session.
Thank you. Okay. I'll go to number nine, agenda item LUC 2201-06, power to Bob Wolf's lot in the Girdwood Industrial Park. HLB lot, Bob Wolf. Think I see a phone number that he might be?
Yeah, Bob Wolf's here.
Thanks, Bob.
Yeah, I'll just keep it kind of short. At the land use committee meeting, it's basically a circular argument with no resolution or solution in sight. Basically, the front end loaders I bring to this valley every winter are critical infrastructure. We have no way to maintain that critical infrastructure. Power to Bob Wolf's lot is just a piece of that critical infrastructure. As pointed out years ago in the board resolution that Mike brought up, where the board requested Heritage Land Bank to put the industrial park on a priority. That needs to be pushed. It needs to get pushed in this five year plan. I thought I remembered the industrial park was going to get put into a one year plan at one point. But anyway, let me just point out, it's critical infrastructure. It's lacking in this valley. It needs to be addressed. Thank you for your time. And everyone is very welcome. We're very pleased to help the community out. I know Kyle, as soon as he heard he lost his crew, it's, oh, no, what do I do? Because you're always behind and, and I was more than help, more than happy to help. So thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Bob. And thanks for all of your help last week. I'm not sure what our valley would do without people like you and all of your equipment and staff. And let's see, Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, this is exactly the sort of thing that we should be discussing when we talk about the HLB plan. Because not only are we commenting on what they have in the plan, we should be commenting on what they don't have in the plan and what they should have in the plan. So, you know, accelerating the development is probably one of those, not to preempt that discussion, but the industrial park is clearly going to be something we, we have to talk about.
Thank you. Kyle?
All right, just to give an update coming out of land use, one of the tasks I went to work on was working with Chugash on the power. And, and I've started that process with them. Unfortunately, it's a whole new set of players. So now it's just trying to get them associated with it. But you know, I think the issue that we've been running into is, I mentioned today that we have a track, not lots, and that started to create some heckups. So, so I'm working through that with them and I'm hoping we can come to some sort of resolution that works for them. But I am starting that process with them getting power to these lots.
Thanks for that update, Kyle. Any questions or comments from the public? Anyone on the phone? Crystal?
I just want to say I'm happy to see that this will be a standing item going forward. And the, the HLB plan, I remember when it was just listed under presentations and announcements and we essentially got no detailed presentation, like several of them that we've seen tonight are super detailed. And we weren't seeing any detail. And then it was moving forward and passing in a, in HLB Advisory Committee. So anyway, please take the time to look at this. And they are doing the, the review of the draft on Thursday at HLB. So if you haven't seen it and you want to be guided through it, they're going to be talking about it on Thursday. And, but happy to see that it'll be listed on here. So thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. Any other comments or questions from the public?
Bob Wolf here, just like to bring to your attention that I, I've been trying to get a lot down there for 30 years. I had to squat 20 years ago to get a land use permit. I was left out of phase one. There is no plan for phase two. And the history there, it's just been too long. And I just wanted to let people know that I've been trying for 30 years.
Thank you, Bob. Mike?
Hi, with your permission, Brianna, could I ask Bob a question?
Yes, please.
Yeah. So Bob, I was just wondering if one of the ideas we've heard is that HLB, I think, you kind of, you know, they realize they're not a developer. So they're looking at bringing in a private party to do the development of the industrial park. If they were going to do that and give priority to current permities, do you think that's something, obviously, you know, the devil's in the details, but in principle, is that something you'd be fine with if that was going to be quicker than HLB doing themselves?
Yes, I mean, it's, it's obviously, HLB only has their interests in mind. Anything at this point, I mean, at this point, I have no future. So and if they sell it, there has to be a caveat in the contract that the existing permities are taken care of. I mean, I know the fire department was in the same dilemma as I am, but probably not as stressful. And the Board of Supervisors is in the same predicament as I am, but probably not as stressful because I'm a private business. I'm not a municipal entity who will get taken care of and who has people that get paid to go to meetings every day for hours on end.
Thanks, Bob. I hope you don't mean me, because I don't get paid.
Oh, no, no. I thank everyone who absolutely, all you are.
I mean, that's the kind of, that's the point I was, I was going to make that the, I think there's, you know, while there is concern about what would happen to the GPS road lot and the fire department, I think we're in a, we're in a better position because it would be a municipal entity transferring. And I think the municipality, you know, our resources would be probably maintained there. I think it, I agree with you. I think it would have to be any private development have to take into account the, at least right the first refusal to the current permities, including private permities. And any permities that, you know, are granted between now, when that actually disposed would happen. Thanks.
Thank you, Wolf. Chief Weston?
Okay, I just want to talk, take off my fire department hat first and talk as a former Heritage Land Bank employee of the 90s. And I want to just say, I agree with Bob. I mean, there's been people in Girdwood that have tried to get Girdwood Industrial Park lots for commercial use for goods, the good of services in Girdwood for 20 years, right? And so when my concern, again, I'm speaking as just me, not as a fire person. My concern is that when this developer lot project goes through, that those people that have patiently been delivering services in our community are taken care of. And it doesn't all go to whoever the developer wants to. I think there has to be some Girdwood, if there could be, Girdwood preference or preference to those people who have had industrial park lots or tried to be permities for a long time. So I just want to lend that support to Bob. And then secondarily, I'm going to put my fire hat back on. Yes, as soon as I found out about this little developer first permit refusal thing, I did send a note to the fire chief and had the fire chief go and talk to the HLB on our behalf because I was concerned about how it would all work for a long term viability of not only the fire department lot and municipal services. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry?
Yeah, as Mike said, the devil's in the details. One concern that I would have if a developer was to develop it, we may get a good deal from the municipality for the municipality lot and the fire department lot. But any private lots, the developer would have to make a profit. And that would mean that, you know, it's going to be expensive to develop that lot. So, you know, before they turn it over to a developer, we should know the details because it may be easy to say, well, all the private entities can have first right refusal, but if the first right refusal is too expensive for them to, you know, pay, then we got a problem. So that's just a thought.
Thank you, Jerry. Mike?
Yeah, I was going to say, I think one of the, one of the advantages, we have numbers which were assessments of the current lots. So, you know, they have, they have full facilities. And we have a, you know, effectively a price per square foot for those lots. So I think the expectation would be, and we can probably even request this, that they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be very, they wouldn't be different for the, you know, module inflation or whatever, for the other lots further down. So the fact that the, the transfers just happened last week, or at least the approval from the assembly was last week, means we do have some data and some numbers we can compare to.
Thank you, everyone, for your thoughts and comments. This certainly will be helpful after today. Any other comments from the public or the board? Okay, I think that we will take it from here. Thank you, Bob, again, for being on the call tonight and all of your service to our community. I see that Mr. Weddleton is on. Could we go circle back to our assembly reports and give John the time? Thanks, John, for being here.
Hi. So did Suzanne speak? I don't
She did not.
Okay. Let me see. I'll have my notes here. You know, on the, the, you know, appreciate you're doing the HLB plan and getting the industrial lot, you know, part of that. And also, you know, have you guys been working with James Kaufman and is he, he hit your area? That's right, on the infrastructure bill to get that on. I mean, that would be a good project. Seems like we're tying closely, you know, if it's about building infrastructure that we need. I mean, getting that industrial lot could tie very closely to some piece of the federal infrastructure bill.
Yeah, we've, we've had that, well, we've had at least a casual discussion with HLB as well on that very issue. On where the infrastructure money can go towards them.
Okay. Well, good. Yeah, be sure to contact, but some of it may go through the state, you know, and they've been real active on it.
We have been in contact with, we've been working with James Kaufman's office on the, on the capital request as well.
Okay. Oh, good. Yeah, because I, I don't sense, I mean, it seems to me, I mean, certainly Raymond Ward was very attuned to the needs at the industrial lot. I think Shelley is, you know, or just broadly, HLB understands the issue there and it's a matter of money somehow. But Bob's made a very good case. You know, for the work he does and the need for it. So Bob, thank you. Keep it up. I, you know, and I think Suzanne and I will keep the pressure up to try to find some way forward to speed that up. And I want to thank, there was a town hall, I think it was last week or so, and that was really useful. And it was nice that it was not organized by government because that puts a different tone on it. And it was, I really appreciate that people were really talking from the heart about what was important in Girdwood. And a lot of it was on the Holden Hills, but it spread out to many other issues too. And it was, it was good that you guys had that. Really learned a lot. Just, I'll just hit a few highlights on things I'm working on. And I, you know, we have a tax abatement for accessory dwelling, dwelling units. On the agenda, we started the public hearing, I think Mike spoke, and then continued it. Meg should have a new version of that. Hopefully, we'll see Thursday morning at the Community and Economic Development Committee. And then continue the public hearing at our March 1st meeting. And I'm getting a lot of feedback on that. And Mike provided some things. It just doesn't work very well in Girdwood. So but that's broadly a good concept where we're just trying, it's one little tool to get more housing in Anchorage. The, you know, we are started talking I had a long meeting with the mayor in December about the DOT wants to get rid of some airports and Birtwood is one and also Girdwood. And that was, and then you probably heard, Mayor sent out an announcement saying that they were looking at taking over. We don't own the airport. We would have management authority of the airport. It's generally a moneymaker. There's lots of federal funds for it. So it's, it wouldn't take city dollars. It would just be, we would just manage it. So, you know, a lot of pluses there, but you know, DOT would like to include Girdwood's airport too. So that's kind of like a thought back there. It's not priority, but it's something for you guys to be thinking about. What would that work? Would that be good? Would it be bad? Are there things? DOT having a management authority isn't working, that the city taking management authority could work. And if it, you know, if there is a ground swell from the Girdwood community, that's something that I would try to bump it up a little bit more on the list. list. And at this point, it's like, we'll, we'll do Birchwood possibly, where it talks about that. And then look at Gerwood. So be thinking about that. And I just don't know the issues out there well. So if anyone from the airport's there, give me a call or email and um, kind of start that discussion. But it's not like a pressing thing. It's just a potential thing that could happen. You know, body cameras are a thing. Uh, you know, we passed them on the ballot, I think, last year with some money. Um, but writing the policy for it has been a challenge. The police say it could be many months to get through an agreement with the um, A P D A, uh, the police union on what, you know, how they would be work. And, you know, they're really expensive, not so much the cameras, but for storing the data and then managing the data and retrieving it and so on when it's needed for court cases. And that's becoming the realization at the police force, um, that that's what they're getting into. So Chief Curl is saying, you know, when they break them out, it's not going to be every officer having them. It's just relatively few as, as they learn what the costs are and how to manage these things. So it's a little bit not a Gerwood thing. I mean, you've got the officers on the highway. But it, it does occur to me too. It's like, okay, we'll have these body cams eventually. It's a slow rollout, but some years from now, A P D will have them. And it's, and Whittier won't. So I don't know if that's an issue either. I don't know what their plans are with body cams, but I would recommend they wait and learn from us. What else are we working? I think those are probably highlights for Gerwood at this point. But I can answer any questions. If you're, you're working on reapportionment, you have assembly districts, and I don't, no realistic map has Turnigan Arm in Gerwood with Eagle River, you know, which one kind of showed hypothetically. And I think what we'll end up with is a reapportionment map, at least for South Anchorage, that is largely similar in look and field what we have now. It's hard to say, but I think, uh, map 11 is probably the strongest map at this point. So any questions or you can, you can give me the hook, Brianna.
Thank you very much, John. Uh, for formality, I think, before we have questions, could we have a motion to extend the meeting past nine o'clock?
I, I think we, um, we continue until 10:00 normally, so I don't think we need.
Great.
Is that right? Is that right, Karen?
Yeah, you don't have to do it until you get to the 10 o'clock. Thanks. I'm 15 minute.
Okay.
Let's hope we don't have to do it until.
No, no, no. I saw something flash across the screen and thought, oh, okay. Any questions for Mr. Weddleton while he's here? Well, I had one, um, and we briefly discussed it at the beginning of the meeting, the A WU, um, here's the subcommittee meetings that happened this week where it was, um, revealed that the fluoridation was session took place in March and then interrupted intermittently, and we're still not having fluoride in the, in the water from the A WU plant here. So we touched on that, but we didn't really discuss it.
I don't know if I have anything to add there. I think there's an email, Mike, back and forth with Mark Orcentino and Brianna, you might have been on as well, that pretty much, Mark, this is mea culpa. Here's why. We're working on a piecemeal, thought we could fix it. Um, and I would just say that the, the point made there was, please let us know sooner in the future. You know, it was not an operation real attentive to the public. I don't think they were trying to hide anything, but they also weren't focused on, hey, we should tell people. I think that message has gotten out pretty well.
Okay.
That's my sense.
Thank you. Um, Mike, you have a question or comment?
Yeah, it wasn't going to be on that, but I will make one quick comment. I think the, everyone who's communicated with me about it, who has some professional experience in this area, are kind of shocked about the three to four-year timeline for replacing a, uh, that particular subsystem on such a small water system. Uh, I think, you know, three to four months is more likely, not three to four years. So, um, there is some question as to why it's being pushed out so far. And, uh, I think there's some cynicism about, um, you know, relating to meral terms as well. But, uh, I don't know what the reality is. I don't feel that, uh, we're getting the full story from A WU. Um, and definitely, I've never heard what their plans were to tell us if, uh, they hadn't slipped out in the work session at the end of January. So I don't feel that we're getting the full story yet. Uh, but the question I actually had for you was reapportionment. Can you, um, remind us when the next, um, sort of actions are on reapportionment?
We will have a public hearing on Thursday, the 24th, coming right up. Six o'clock, it's scheduled six to 10. I don't know if we'll take that whole meeting. So if you want to talk at there early. And we've got four active maps. And then we'll have a meeting, uh, the next day in the afternoon to kind of share what we heard and see where assembly members are at. And then there will be a public hearing on March 1st. Again, and, you know, at any point, there could be new maps. Members can bring in new maps or just recommend small changes to existing maps. It's, it's, um, kind of learning as we go. We've gotten a lot of requests from community councils, excuse me, to, uh, extend the public hearing, have one on March 15th, which I thought was reasonable. And I, I made a pitch for that at our last meeting. Um, but that went down in flames, which is a little frustrating. And, you know, we are so involved on the assembly with this that it's like, of course, we know, you know, it's real obvious to us. We've been working on it for a long time since we, you know, had the vote to have 12 assembly members. We knew it was coming. We're all thinking about it. So, you know, I think many members are kind of in mode, people should know, but they don't. And they told us that. And they told us they wanted more time. So we'll see, you know, it was like tentatively, well, we might go to the 15th, but basically if you're in the community council, you're going, well, they might not too. So now they have to rush out of their cycle to get comments in by March 1. So, and that's a little side issue, but, you know, it's frustrating to me not, we were, are not in such a big hurry that we couldn't wait. And, um, we just give people the time, you know, to learn and see it and become comfortable with it. And who knows, there might be a brilliant new idea out there that we didn't think of, so. Um, but anyway, at that, at this point, it's the 24th and the first, and it's possible decision will be made on the first.
Can I just ask one quick question about the mechanics of that? So if, um, because normally if you have a public hearing and you speak during the public hearing, you can't speak again during that item, even if it's extended to another meeting. So if there were changes to maps, um, if you commented on the 24th, you couldn't comment them on the first, or would they be introduced as an S version? I'm sorry to be so inside baseball, but I just want to understand the mechanics.
No, that's really important, you know. Um, if typically you would not be able to speak again on the first, if the chair decides to have two separate public hearings, treat them as separate ones. But I think it is one item at this point. But if a brand new map comes in, it's very different. Uh, like, you know, if we have any item just broadly, and then there's a substitute version, like the, uh, A D U, um, my guess is you have a very simple item and uh, Meg Zaltel's working on a, you know, substitute version that my expectation would be substantially different. So in that case, you would allow people to speak again because a new version is so much different. So I think similarly, if a really different map showed up, or if there were major amendments to existing maps, then, um, then it would be open to people speaking twice. And that's something we could just, where, where do you draw that line? Sometimes it's really obvious, like an A D U thing, I think it will be. But in terms of the maps, it's something we probably discuss and then vote on. Should we let people vote, you know, speak again? And I would tend to think, yeah, to say, we don't have hundreds of people speaking on it. So, you know, there's time.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Weddleton. Uh, Chief Weston has her hand up.
Um, hi, I hate to ask this question, but has there been any discussion on the word vehicle extrication tools for the Seward Highway?
I not, well, only things from you and Gerwood folks talking about, I guess, one broke. I, you know, it was, I guess it was at our public, um, somebody brought it up, I think, at our, um, Public Safety Committee. That you, yours broke during, uh, an extrication, and that's not a good thing.
Right.
Um, how do you get more? And there was no funding in the bond for it when you got the new rig? Is that right?
Yeah, it got cut out at the last minute from the last administration, not this administration. And there's no funding mechanism to provide for it. So we're using the 20 and 30-year-old tools that were funded by Senator Stevens. So my challenge is, as people are suggesting that I am now personally liable and, you know, could be negligent for using 25 and 30-year-old tools, because the municipality told me that it's my responsibility as a nonprofit employee to fundraise for these tools. Um, I just was wondering if there's any plan, um, presented, or obviously not, or by the municipality or the state to fund these things.
I'm not aware.
I just don't understand how this, how the municipality and/or the state can push liability and responsibility onto a nonprofit employee of a service area which isn't, which is outside of the Seward Highway. That's my question.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's very interesting. If you go do a call on the Seward Highway, yeah, it's a real good point. I, I have to say, I don't know the funding mechanisms. I mean, my go-to would be, hey, we got first quarter budget revisions, but that's going to be a tough one. And in there, um, I almost feel like I'd be lucky to get you the rest of your E M, uh, E M S.
Right, right. It seemed curious to me.
Which I will try, you know.
Yeah, it seemed curious to me that, you know, first they say, well, you're short 15,000 because there's this tax cap on the funds and we can't certify it against it. But then at the same time, we get an email that says, okay, uh, put in your first quarter budget revisions for EMS, but it's like, okay, but you already shortchanged me the 15,000 and told me that we couldn't get that because of a tax cap. How do I do that then? Right? So it seems kind of all weird.
Well, that, we might, the thing with the first quarter budget revisions, the reason we do it then is we will have end of the year results in. And there may be more income from various sources than we thought, uh, like we are seeing when uh, the amendments to the mayor's budgets in December were based on uh, pretty reasonable assumptions that the alcohol tax would be higher than the mayor kind of projected. And in fact, it turns out that um, they were substantially higher. So things like that happen. So, you know, it is worth, definitely put your requests in. Uh, you may not get them, you know, but we, there are certain areas of the budget, um, revenues that were higher than expected. So there may be some money there. And, and make sure I have the clear dollar amounts, you know, by, um, so I'll be ready. Send me exactly what you need. And then Suzanne and I will be ready when we do.
Okay, well, that's, that's helpful because I was feeling like, what's the point, right? Like, if they already, if they already went through this and approved an amount, but then surprise, the amount is now 15,000 less, you know, I feel like, what's the point of putting it in again? But, okay, I will put it in and I will include the, the, uh, rescue equipment in that request.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And then they would give me an order of magnitude, what we're dealing with too. I don't want to quite know. Be helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that discussion, Mr. Weddleton. Any other questions? Or comments? Any at all? Okay. Thank you so much for your time and your service and coming out to the meeting.
Thanks. Happy to be here. Thanks. I'll hang out.
Okay. All right, next on our agenda is actually, uh, L U C 2201 dash 07, Discussion of Assembly Redistricting Apportionment, Reapportionment of Assembly Seats and Consider G V S A Formal Comment. So in light of the dates that were just given to us, reminded, because we've known these dates for a long time, uh, we could discuss how we feel about the maps or a formal comment from the service area. Mike, would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, I would. Um, briefly, um, actually, um, John mentioned four maps. I was only aware of three. Is there a, is there a fourth map? I don't know if John's still here. I was confused by that comment.
No, I, I am here. There's, there is a, I'm sorry, I'm jumping in. Brianna, if I may?
No, yes, please.
Okay, sorry, forgetting the protocols. Um, uh, there is a fourth one that is, uh, Jamie and Crystal submitted one at the meeting. So there's one that, um, uh, should be, it is posted somewhere up there. It might be in the archives, but I, I think, I think on the whole list, you just go to the very bottom and you'll see a map 12.
Map 12.
Is it down there?
So it's not, so that's not formally been, that's not formally being presented, but it is still, it can potentially come in for consideration.
No, it is absolutely. Uh, the way, each map is a, a version of the ordinance. So the basic one is, I think, that map six point something, and the map 12 is, um, S four, S three, or some, S three, or, uh, or the ordinance S three.
Thanks.
Thank you, John. Okay, Mike?
Yeah, I mean, the, from a very selfish Gerwood-centric point of view, um, all of these maps have us tied in with the majority of South Anchorage. Um, there is some, if we go between the maps, you can see a little bit of difference between the way that the, um, how far, how far our, um, district extends west. One of the maps also excludes a chunk of the hillside. Um, I think it's map seven. There's a larger part of the hillside is missing. A lot of that area is actually empty, but the, um, but the sort of, the western projection of that is, uh, does have residential areas and Stuckigan Heights, which is the, the area just sort of in the middle, just to the, um, just to the east of the purple area. There we go. That's sort of L-shaped section. Uh, that's also, um, currently, I think, part of Midtown. But from a very sort of selfish point of view, where, um, we stay part of Turnigan Arm, we stay part of the majority of South Anchorage. So the map doesn't make a huge difference to us, but it does change the other communities we're tied into. Um, and therefore, honestly, the, you know, in the, in the next 10 or 20 years, uh, the communities that are representatives are likely to come from, given they're the most populous areas rather than Turnigan Arm. So I don't know if, as a group, we have a preference or any comments on these. I have some personally, but I'd like to hear it as broader discussion first.
Thank you, Mike. Are there any other comments from the board? I don't hear any or see any hands. But I know, Mike, you've done a lot of research on this and, um, I don't have any strong feelings either way, but I like being with South Anchorage.
Yeah, so I, I, I just say that I have a, um, I have a preference for map 11 as well. It's, um, I think there's a, there's a couple of reasons. It doesn't, it keeps, it keeps basically the, um, a similar distribution of, um, of areas, a very similar distribution to the areas we have now, um, while allowing West Anchorage to, um, to sort of move, move, uh, expand a little bit into the corner. Um, and that, that accounts for the, for the sort of split in, um, population across all of the different areas. Um, I'm not a fan of map seven, um, which cuts out parts of the hillside. Um, I could tolerate map six. But, um, and I have not honestly studied map 12 because I didn't realize it was fully under consideration. But, uh, again, I don't think as, from a purely Gerwood-centric point of view, there probably aren't huge differences between them. But, uh, I think the, the impact over the next 20, 10 to 20 years is, uh, we would be better off under map 11. That's my sense.
Thanks, Mike. And also, Mr. Weddleton's email with the maps and the mostly pros, very few cons on each one, uh, was really helpful for people that haven't looked at them yet, if they're looking at just the final three. So if we don't have much of a discussion, uh, do we have our next meeting? Actually, we do have another meeting, the 28th, if we do come up with a formal comment before March 1st. We technically could.
I was actually going to propose that we write a letter or the, well, we could write it as a resolution, or we could write it as a letter to, um, to support map 11.
Do we have a second?
Hi, um, Brianna?
Yes.
This is Guy Cassidy. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I don't, you know, we're going to have a, um, there's an opportunity to discuss this, you know, before we vote on it, on choosing map 11 further, you know, probably should have.
We could do it.
Go ahead.
On the eighth. We have a special meeting on the twenty eighth?
I, I think that's a good idea to, at this point, to get, and Amanda, I think, probably will be there at that point.
Right.
That's just my thought on it. I could have came a little more prepared for this if, but I would like a little more time.
Yeah, that, I, that sounds fine. I'll withdraw my motion.
Jennifer?
All good. I just agree with everything that was just said, so that all works.
Okay, great. Yay. We are all on the same page for now. Okay, so we'll look forward to discussion then. And I see that Matthew Harvey is on. So if we're finished with this item, instead of going to eleven, real quick, we could do Representative Kaufman's staff. Matthew Harvey is here to give an update.
Yes. And if that's okay. Sorry, first off, sorry I'm so late. I texted Brianna and I apologize for that. I know it's a little, a little behind, but I can touch on a few subjects. If you want me to go in depth on any work, I can absolutely do that. Or anything else that I don't touch on. But budget-wise, at the state level, we're doing subcommittees right now. So we're in a number of subcommittees. Those are by departments. We have administration, revenue, labor and workforce development, and environmental conservation. So we'll be this week and with some early next week, voting on all the governor's budget amendments to each of those departments' budgets. So that's the governor's changes from last year. And then the governor's amended budget, which has a few changes to it, came out last week, late last week. So we'll also be considering all of those. So once we vote on those in the subcommittee process at the department level, which is kind of more of a deeper dive into the budget, it'll go to the House Finance Committee. The House Finance Committee will take that and integrate those changes and a few others into their, their version of the budget. And then that'll get deliberated on, amended in House Finance, and then go to the floor. So that, I'm not totally sure how long the process will take to get it to the floor, but we'll be sending subcommittee reports back to the House Finance Committee, probably, I'd say like March third, around, around that time. So that's kind of budget stuff. The other things that we're working on, we have, we're on legislative budget and audit. So we've been working for a while, I've probably said this before in another meeting, on top ten audit findings, trying to work some of those to resolution. Because in our annual comprehensive financial report, audited financials of the state, our audit findings have grown from about thirty-five, about ten years ago, to about ninety-five this year. I guess last year, it's kind of backward looking. But so we tried, worked with our audit group to come up with top ten findings based on cost of the state, size, age, how long they've been out there, societal or, or other impacts like that. We came up with a top ten. It comes up to about like one point nine billion dollars in, in audit findings. Some of those are disputed. About one point two billion of those are disputed. So that's one thing we're working with our finance chairs and our legislative budget and audit committee on, is trying to come to agreement on what the next steps are for those. If they're disputed, nobody will move, then we may have to settle it with litigation, just to get a judicial opinion on whether, you know, whether the money should be in this account or this account. And that's, can be a finding sometimes. So on March third, we're having a legislative budget and audit committee meeting. That'll be an interesting one. We're going to touch on the permanent fund board of directors, litigation, which is new and, and, and the investigation is, is ongoing. There is no litigation. It's hired investigative team. So that'll be presented at that meeting in open session, as well as these legislative budget and audit, top ten findings and path forward. So it's kind of a, an interesting, kind of, it, it has larger impacts on, you know, the budgets. That's a big one. In our committees, there's a few kind of issues which are kind of rising to the top of the pack. One is political campaign contribution limits, which, if you guys have opinions on political campaign contribution limits, I'd love you guys to send us emails on those. Pass those out of committee, but they're going to be worked a little bit more and then go to the floor. So if you guys do have opinions on those or questions about them, that, that's one that I'd, I'd like to hear, hear from people on. Also, we had a bill pass the floor unanimously, which is, it's, it's kind of a littler bill. I'd say that, you know, it is, it is a little bit, not like, it's not a massive, like constitutional bill or, or really a partisan bill. But we kind of did that on purpose. It's, it's a little document reduction bill to say, either we need to do these electronically, we don't need to do them, or we can combine them and approve these reports, publications and stuff. Little relative to other things, but it could save between five hundred thousand, like one point one million a year just from printing and time spent on them. Costs was the last estimate, last estimate done in like twenty. So probably a little bit more than that now, but just kind of something that we could get through. And I think we're, we're going to have one committee referral in the Senate, possibly two, not totally sure. So I think that's one that could get through this year. And then tomorrow, tomorrow, actually, if you want to tune in, eleven o'clock on AKL.tv, Lisa Rakowski is going to be giving her presentation to the joint session of the Senate and the House get together to listen to the senators speak. So that'll be at eleven o'clock live. And tomorrow also, we'll be introducing one of, we have kind of two big pieces of legislation, one small and passed, relatively small, passed the House. We have a spending cap and a new one, which is going to be introduced tomorrow, which is kind of a rewrite of the Executive Budget Act to have a more cohesive set of planning hierarchy based on performance and, and to kind of tie performance into, into the budget and reporting and how we do work. And then, those are kind of the big things. If there's anything else you want me to go into, I can go in more in depth or on any other issues as well. But those are a few big things.
Well, thank you, Matthew. Chief Weston has your hand up.
Yes.
Hi, Matthew. I, I just wanted to know if your office received any, or has had any discussion on Seward Highway extrication tool funding or anything like that? I know we have a meeting scheduled later in the week, but I'm just wondering if there was any feedback from the media that happened a week ago.
That is great. I talked to you on the phone earlier today, instead of a meeting. It actually reminds me also, I meant to talk about capital projects. But I think if we talk on the phone, it could be something, I still have access to CAPSIS. I'll kind of tie this into my capital projects thing really quick. So capital projects, we have a number of projects from you guys' area that I think you might, Brianna, for all your help in putting those in. We have the, we have trouble saying. Culvert replacement, the Culverts, Alias Creek, and the Little Bear Playhouse, Girdwood Childcare Facility. You also have Turney and Arm Trail Maintenance and Extension, and then the, the hand tram replacement. I still have access to CAPSIS. I'll put it in there just to create a project folder, but that'll probably be after the meeting that we have. Off the top of my head, I forget. I think it's Thursday. But I think, I, I'm kind of interested to learn more. I didn't really know too much about this issue until you brought it up, which thankfully you did. And to kind of see where you're at with, and where everything's at. I guess I, I wasn't really aware. It wasn't too, very much on my radar. So trying to figure out, I heard a little bit of the problem statement, but trying to figure out where we're at in approaching that problem statement, what we can do. Because I still have a, a window for possibly putting it in for discretionary funding. But I'm, I'm glad you called and reached out. I, I guess I, I'm in the same boat. It wasn't really too much on my radar, unfortunately.
Right, right. Just, just to clarify, this is something that would be for the Seward Highway and not necessarily for Girdwood, so to speak, just to make sure that it doesn't sort of take priority of, over other Girdwood needs, right? So this is more of a Seward Highway corridor issue versus a Girdwood issue, but nobody is championing the cause. So I'm championing the cause. So I just would want to make sure that we didn't take away any Girdwood capital improvement opportunities for something, which is something that happens outside of Girdwood, but is near and dear to all of our hearts. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I appreciate you championing the cause. Sometimes you just need somebody to step up and do this. I do appreciate that.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you so much for answering my question.
Thank you. Mike Edgington?
Yeah, just following up on, following up on what Michelle said. The, there's a, I think it, there's a, there's a thing in highway safety called the four E's. And to make a safe, safe highway, you're meant to incorporate, combine engineering, education, enforcement, and emergency services. And the DOT gets a huge amount of money from the federal government for the engineering, and they spend a little bit of it in education. And then the other two are left to, you know, if it's in a municipality, it's left in a municipality. If it's outside the municipality, enforcement's left to the troopers, and emergency services is kind of ignored completely. As the, as more money comes in for infrastructure, it would be really good to see some way of balancing those four E's. So, you know, one, one idea I've heard mentioned is, you know, the, the state perhaps should do something about EMS services across, you know, all of the major highways across the state, or provide something. In some cases, it's, it's run by volunteer organizations. In some cases, it's run by municipal organizations. In some cases, there is no emergency service. And all this, all this resources coming into building new highways and almost nothing is put towards, you know, the other very important parts of that equation. The enforcement and the emergency services. So it's just kind of a plug for thinking about the whole system and not just building more and maintaining more. Because that doesn't do it, that, you know, better engineering doesn't solve it. If you can't, if there is an accident, you cannot get, you cannot get a crew there in time. It doesn't help anyone.
No, it's a great point. And we might maybe have a little scope drift in that meeting and talk just kind of generally about services on the Seward Highway. Michelle, if you're open to that. It's something that I, I just don't think, it's not, it, it's not talked about very much that we hear about. So it's something that does need to be expanded on. I'm driving the Seward Highway all the time. I, I totally see what you're, what you're talking about. And I don't, I just haven't heard very much about it.
That's because we're the only ones that do it, and we're the only ones that talk about it. So, so just as everybody knows, the closest, next closest extrication equipment is on, is at Station Twelve on Diamond and Seward Highway, that station there you see from the highway. And then the next heavy, the next heavy extrication tools is on Tudor and McGinnis, right, by Lake Otis there. So if our thirty-year-old equipment goes down, the next closest people that are coming to cut you out of your car from here to Cooper Landing is coming from Anchorage, right? Diamond or Tudor Road. So that's why it's important for us to update this equipment.
Thank you, Chief Weston. Any other questions for Matthew? Or comments? All right. Well, it sounds like you have lots to do, Matthew. Thank you very much for being here. Thank you guys for the. Meetings all day and all evening, so. It's okay.
Thank you, guys.
All right, is there any other, anything else we left off from number ten on? I think that we finished that. So number eleven on the agenda, update on October twenty twenty-one storm and financial discussion, status of emergency declaration, first quarter revision needs, set meeting date if one is needed, and long-term solution for Ruwan Road. Kyle?
Sure. So the emergency declaration is in place for the Halloween storm, the Halloween weekend storm that we had that caused damage on Loveland, Crystal, Echo Ridge, and then down on Ruane, where the, the washout happened there on the way to the Abu Plan. And so we received that declaration, and now we're starting the process with the state. We did, we are, now are beginning weekly meetings with the state. We went through and categorized all the different damage last Thursday, and we will now continue to go through and work through all sort of the details about each damage and what it is. So down to the specifics of how long the culvert that we put in at, at the third driveway on Echo is very detailed as we go through that. So we are putting that all together and just basically collect, collecting documentation, getting that all in line with the, with the hopes of getting full reimbursement for all the damages that were spent during this emergency declaration. So, so that's moving forward. Now, first quarter revisions, it does not look like we're going to need to do any sort of special assessment to replenish the funds that we used out of our emergency funds. We look like we have enough of a surplus coming out of twenty twenty-one fiscal year to help us replenish those. And also maybe, and give a starter to our undesignated fund, which is basically our savings account that we grow as well. So, so that looks good. We will definitely discuss that more next week at the end of the year review, where we go over the budgets and the projects that were completed in twenty-one, and, and sort of review, and also talk about what's ahead of us for, for the coming years. So yeah, we will be working on that as well. But we want to place this as a introduction for first quarter revisions, and then we will talk further with you more about it at the March meeting, because we do have to make a revision to the police contract. Our police contract is, has a term within it for the Consumer Price Index. And when that increases, then our, our, but our contract with them increases. This isn't something we had to do actually for a year. Last year, the CPI was negative, so the contract stayed the same as written in the language. But this year, the contract is going up, as we know inflation is at some of the highest it's ever been. And, and so we, we were estimating from our calculations, we thought we were going to be around six point four, but Whittier came in with a four point nine increase. And so what that means for annually, that would be a fifty-nine thousand dollar increase. So we would be going from six hundred and seventy-five thousand to seven hundred and eight thousand and seventy-five dollars. So basically, seven hundred and eight thousand is our new contract amount. And monthly, that increase would be, excuse me, the annual increase would be thirty-three thousand, and the monthly increase would be twenty-seven thousand dollars. And, and so our monthly payments now will be fifty-nine thousand to Whittier for a total of seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars there. So we will be discussing that more, because we will, we would want to make that change at first quarter revision, so that reflects a proper budget to finish out the year there. And then the next item, long-term solutions for Ruane Road. As mentioned there in the discussion, we have gotten the Ruane Road repairs into the CAPSIS with the state, so the capital program there. And we are seeking funding from the state and also from those infrastructure dollars coming in for that project there. We're estimating it's going to be a one point five million dollar project to make the prayer, the long-term repairs there. We have temporary pipes in there, but they aren't adequate for potential storm flows for the future. And then they're nowhere acceptable for fish passage. So the goal would be to build a box culvert, cement box culvert, that is adequate for fish passage and will be oversized and be able to take any flows, least what we can predict for the future. So, so that's where we're at with long-term solutions there. So open the questions.
Thanks, Kyle. Any questions? Mike?
Yeah, so I think we're, we're obviously in a position where we're not going to, we're not going to be able to replace the Ruwan Ru, Road culvert this year. Is that correct? I mean, there's, I don't foresee any way of doing that.
No, no way.
What's the kind, so what's the timing we have to consider if we do it for next summer? When would we need to have the funding secure and the, the proposal out for bid?
Well, our best chance right now for funding is coming out of the state. And so you know the state. Well, our best chance right now for funding is coming out of the state. And so you know, the state is able to pass the budget. Um, whenever that may be, then we would start right away on, uh, full design. And, uh, you know, ideally, uh, we would like to have it out for bid by January of next year. Um, so, you know, eleven months, ten months from now. Um, so it's really dependent if we can secure the funding, um, in that period and we can do, start doing some field work in the summer, um, with our design team. And, uh, we've already done a post-construction survey, so we're, we're a step ahead there. So we know what's sitting out there right now. We know the inverts of all the flow, uh, that goes through the existing pipes. We know the, um, topography of the creek as it goes upstream and quite a bit of distance in each direction. They are out there in the ice breaking it up right after, uh, we got done with construction so they could get all that wires fresh. So, so that's a huge aspect for us. Then it just goes to design and, uh, and the project management engineering is very well aware of this. So we, 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 if we get that funding secured, then things can move along pretty good. And we would love to be out the bid next January.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks for that question. Any other questions? Anyone from the public? Okay, Kyle. Thank you for that. Okay, number twelve, structure of new old business meeting requirement and discuss what is needed for petitioners to receive one meeting review. So we touched on this last meeting and, uh, always getting to the end of timing. So who would like to speak to this?
I, I could touch on this. Uh, this, this basically comes from staff in the sense that we're trying to seek, uh, clarity, uh, when somebody may be able to skip the two-meeting process, which is sort of standard, it's a standard here in Gerwood, uh, with all committees and, and GBOS, uh, for, uh, consideration or approval of their request, whatever it may be. Um, and so, uh, in here, we pulled up, uh, the, um, two-meeting procedure requirement from GBOS, land use and trails. Um, and so you can see what's highlighted here that, that relates to it. And so, um, what we were proposing, um, and, and this document gives you history of it, uh, as well. Um, what we were proposing was to, uh, have basically a set of questions, um, that, you know, gives us an idea, um, as to why you think your meeting, your items should only require one meeting. And a lot of times, you know, it could be a deadline issue. There's a, there's a P and Z meeting. It's two weeks from now. We just found out about it. We didn't know the process. We need to do this. Um, and so, uh, sometimes there's circumstances that are beyond the petitioner's, uh, ability to, uh, be within the cycle that GBOS and the subcommittees would like to see. And so, uh, this gives a chance for, uh, them to understand it. So. So what we have here is sort of the flexibility, um, to, uh, do that if, if, if we feel they qualify from their answers.
Thanks, Kyle. Anyone else? Mike, you had some good ideas for this one.
Yeah, well, I, I think that there's a slightly broader question of, um, you know, other things that we discussed twice, or we probably only need to discuss once, sort of more, you know, ministerial tasks and, uh, things we could probably do through a consent agenda. But let's, if we narrow it down to this particular issue, I, I like these questions. And, uh, I think we could, we could probably put these explicitly into our rules and procedures and just say that they have to be, you know, once, we have to get an answer to these and then the, uh, the board, it's slightly different in LUC, but at least for GBOS, um, when, when, when we have an answer to these questions, we can vote to accept a single meeting. But I like the lang, I like the language in, in these three, these three bullet points.
And, and the thing we'd like for you to consider is if you like to have a, the, uh, two-third majority requirement to, to, for that. Um, so, you know, that's, uh, something that is easier, I guess, maybe with the subcommittees because they're larger. Um, but in this case, you know, you would have to have a two-third majority requirement from GBOS to, uh, allow for the override of the meeting requirement.
So we only need a, we only need a simple majority if we want to change the agenda in any way at the beginning of the meeting. I think it's two-thirds typically during the meeting for changing the order of business. But, uh, at the beginning of the meeting, we could just, we can change it as we wish from a majority vote. So it seems like a, a kind of steep, um, a steep requirement to have two-thirds to change one specific thing, yet only a simple majority to change anything.
Correct.
Guy, your hand is up.
Yeah, um, the first bullet point there, the lack of clarity of the requirement for community input. Um, how do we quantify that or what, what? How can we put bounds around that? Is that, um, that seems like that could be up for dispute or, you know, um, anytime this question comes up.
Could I respond to that, Brianna?
Yes.
When it comes to at least land use issues, um, there's a, there is actually a clear list of things in code that require community input versus those that don't. Um, so we could, you know, conditional, there, there's a bit in the LUC rules and regulations at the moment about conditional use. And, and it's shared between that and GBOS. Um, so conditional use permits are something that does require a community meeting. But some of the other things, for example, variances do not require a community meeting. Um, but people often come in front of, um, of GBOS to ask for support because it's a, it's a good thing to have if the community supports it. Uh, but it's not strict requirement under most circumstances. So there, there's kind of a, there is a clear, there is a defined list. I don't think it's particularly clear in code. Um, but we could pull, we could work on that and pull it out and have a list of things that are, where there's a requirement and those where it's optional, which I think is what that point is getting to. But sometimes the timing works out that it's not, it's, you know, the, the timing of these meetings, I think this is a, this is something you hear from a lot of community councils that, um, you know, they'll meet once a month, but the timing of a lot of the municipal things are faster than that. There just isn't notice sometimes, even for, even for a single meeting, but alone for two.
Yeah, I, I, I support it. I just, you know, that, um, you know, worried about open Pandora's box and, and, um, if we don't have, you know, some bounds around that first bullet, but if there are, if there are, um, something we could reference that might strengthen it.
Thank you, Guy, and thank you, Mike. I also agree with these suggestions and with all the meetings I've been intending for the last few years, I think it'd be really more efficient. Uh, and the more I pay attention to any assembly meetings, having a consent agenda makes a lot of sense. Because a lot of work happens outside of the meetings. Um, and it would help community members perhaps go through the public process more and actually get a letter of support or non-objection for something like a variance. So thank you, Kyle and Margaret for working on those and from other of our subcommittees seem like they're also in favor of at least discussing, maybe changing their bylaws. Any other comments?
Really just a question, a question for staff. So, um, the way we've normally done it is we would, we would hope that we're not actually, we're not telling LUC or GTC or whatever the committee is to adopt certain language, but we, we either adopt it ourselves and recommend they do. Or, um, in this case, I think what we're actually asking for is the sub, is the committee to adopt this language rather than us. Um, is, am I interpreting this correctly?
Well, I think we're asking each body to consider adopting it. Um, and, and so you, you do work basically independently. So we would ask GBOS to consider adopting this, uh, into your operating procedures, um, so that we could, uh, and then we can, we can represent, we can show that to the other committees and, and let them determine if they like to adopt it as well.
Okay, so can I? As a, I'll see if I can phrase this as a motion. So, um, the mechanism we have, if we're going to adopt our, where, um, our procedures, is that we have to come up with a draft, present that to the community for at least thirty days, um, and then we get to vote on it. So we're not quite at a point where we have a, a draft change to the, um, where we have a draft change to the procedures. Um, but I think we're close to that. I think if we take these three questions and add them to the section above that's, uh, highlighted and just say, you know, that for, for something to be considered, we need suitable answers to these three questions. But we'll have to, we'll have to draft that into actual language and then publish it. Maybe there's something else we can add to next week's meeting.
Well, we'll do it. If you want to do it fairly quick, we could do that, or we could just put it to your next regular meeting.
Yeah, let's do that. But let's actually have a draft for the next meeting.
Okay, we'll have a draft for you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
If that's the will of the body, of course.
How, what is the will of the body? I don't see any objections.
Yep, no, I agree with that.
Thanks, Guy. Yeah, I think anything that helps us all be more productive, uh, in and outside of our meetings is great. And moving us forward. Thanks again, Kyle, for that. So we'll look forward to a draft. And okay, I'm clicking away, looking for the agenda. We can move to, yes, number thirteen, update on GBOS Resolution twenty twenty dash eleven, resolution against racism and community forum. Resolution is in the packet. Um, Mike, thank you, Mike.
Briefly, because I think I'm the only person left on the board from when we passed this. Um, so this is something that came from LUC and, um, GBOS, we said we were going to, um, convey some sort of community forum. And, uh, I spent a significant amount of time, um, talking to a number of members of the community and various other resources outside of the community. Um, trying to find a suitable format for that, um, that actually would be substantive and what I think we, we thought would be useful. And, uh, was not able to make much progress on it. So what I would really like is if somebody, uh, if perhaps somebody else on the, on GBOS could, uh, could take this and, uh, and start working on it themselves, because I was not able to get much traction on this particular topic. I think it'd still be useful if it's in the right form, but that right form is kind of a difficult process or is difficult problem.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, that was probably lots of work. And, uh, from this form, does it need to be edited? Because you're saying this was the, this was the land use resolution in twenty twenty?
No, this was, this was our resolution. Um, I'm just saying that it came from land use. It was supported by land use as well as, uh, GBOS. So it isn't just something that came from GBOS by itself. It was supported by the community through land use.
Got it. Yeah, I did read this the other day. All right. I'm happy to try to take this further, but, uh, I think for now, we could see if there's a second. Guy?
No, I, I, I would help you with it, Brianna, if, um,
Thank you.
If you'd like my help.
Yes. I'd like your help. That'd be great. So Mike, what, what do we need to do next then for this resolution?
Um, I can share my, uh, notes and, uh, and all the contacts I worked through and, uh, see if you can either continue with those or find some other resources.
Okay. Okay. Sounds good. I appreciate it. I think the community will as well. Anything else on number thirteen? Okay, don't see any hands. So the new business, number fourteen, agenda item LUC twenty-two zero-two dash zero-five, Gerwood Parks and Recreation and Turnigan Arm Lions Club requests GBOS resolution of support to seek matching grant funding for a picnic pavilion in Lions Club Park. Application is due March seventeenth.
All right, I'll, I'll touch on this. And I know, uh, Kathy's here. She might want to talk from, uh, the Lions Club perspective, but, uh, Gerwood Parks and Rec, along with Lions Club are partnering up to seek a, uh, Anchorage Parks Foundation grant. Um, in the pursuits of, uh, getting a covered park shelter, um, that would have ADA access and be able to house two picnic tables, um, in the park. And so, um, we've been waiting on this project. It's kind of been mothballed as we've been trying to find grant sources, uh, one of them being the Land and Water Conservation Grant, which has been uh, tied up with the state, but we heard that's coming as well, uh, but maybe not till, uh, late fall. Um, but what we have right now is an opportunity in front of us. This is sort of a prime suspect for, uh, a, a prime project or a prime grant, uh, for the Anchorage Park Foundation, where we have a community organization working together with, uh, Parks and Rec. And we're trying to accomplish a need, um, that that organization's trying to, uh, do for their organization and the park. So we would build a basic shelter in there. Um, and it's kind of needed in that park that, as you know, that park's very well treed. It's got a lot of cottonwoods, um, and, but it is a place that gets used quite a bit, um, for picnic day, picnicking, evening, picnicking. Um, and so having a covered shelter in there, uh, would be great. Um, it wouldn't be, uh, a, 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 a large shelter like the Nissman or Arlo, it'd be, uh, more, uh, moderate size. As I said, two large ADA picnic tables in there with plenty of room and roof around. Um, and also probably be at, uh, road surface level so that we can build a nice pathway up to it. So all users can access the pavilion. So we're introducing this tonight and we will definitely talk more about it, um, at your next meeting. Um, and have a resolution for you.
Thanks, Kyle. Kathy Trotner, are you here and would you like to speak?
Uh, yes, sure. I am here and I wasn't necessarily planning to speak, but, uh,
Oh, you don't, yeah, you don't, I'm not trying to make you if you want to next time instead.
Well, I'm delighted to, uh, see that, that there are some opportunities. Our Lions Club has been, uh, setting aside money from our fundraisers that we do, like with our annual Humpy Fest, primarily in, and occasional raffles to raise money. And we hadn't, hadn't really thought of anything quite as, quite as substantial and all as what, um, seems to be what Kyle has been looking at for us. He's done some research and really knows what he's, what, what we need to do in that particular area. And, um, I think it'd be great. We're, we certainly have seen so much use of that park as Kyle mentioned in the, uh, all summer in the, uh, daytime and the evenings, you know, families there, picnicking. So it would be really nice to have a place in our occasional rainy times to have shelter. So we appreciate Kyle, you going ahead with this, uh, uh, grant and Margaret. And, um, then we'll learn what we need to do as we get further along.
Thank you, Kathy. Thanks for all of your volunteering with this also. Any comments or questions? From the board or from the public? Okay. Don't see anything else. So we'll go to number fifteen, discuss Gerwood Valley Service Area First Quarter Budget Revisions. But did you already do that, Kyle?
Yeah, quickly. That's just what I talked about, but above. And we'll mostly, I could be addressing the, uh, police, uh, budget for twenty-two. So we'll have more for you at the next meeting.
Okay. All right, the next items are reports that are in the packet. I could read them all or not. Uh, yes, the Garrish Library information and we have COVID testing in Gerwood Tuesdays and Saturdays. Lots of great, great information. Lots of great, great information in the packet for the reports. Is there anything else I missed? Okay. I think that's all. We have a motion to adjourn before 10.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, Mike. Any seconds? Thanks, Guy. All right. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight and stay safe.
Night. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.